Missy, if you'll do the roll call.
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Chase?
Here.
Mr. Coos not here yet. Ms. Guy is not here.
She's here.
Ms. Halsted?
She's here.
Is she?
Yeah, she's here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
That's all right.
On Ms. Halsted.
Ms. Sigmund?
Here.
And Dr. Warner?
Here.
I'm sure you have a quarrel.
Missy, did we hear anything different from Ms. Guy since I updated you?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so we do not need authorization to participate electronically for this meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We're going to be discussing the discretionary expenses and unfunded priorities to your -- to the budget. I think we wanted to move through the presentation and save the questions because otherwise we'll, I think, get derailed. And Dr. Taylor, as I should have made, is very brief.
Yeah.
Also, I just want to point out that we will also be discussing this with the supervisors on the 27th, and I would like for us to think about what part we might wish to be like ours to address in that meeting. So keep that in the back of your mind as we're talking today on a point you feel strongly about, and let me know. Over to yours.
All right, well, thank you, Madam Chair. This would be a lot more fun if he was wearing a striped sweater and a pair of round glasses and a ski hat, but where's Chris Fulmer tonight? He's across the street at the Board of Supervisors as they are also meeting this evening and have schools-related agenda items. Our request for modular classrooms is before the supervisors this evening, and they also have an agenda item dealing with Elementary School 19 and that capital improvement project. And Mr. Fulmer is across the street.
Bless you.
Bless you. Responding to their questions right now, so I'll do my very best to go through our presentation briefly and answer your questions. I also have Carter Fitch here, who is our Director of Budget behind me, who will also chime in, as well as our Chief Talent Officer, Patrick Burnett, who is also here this evening. So just as a quick refresher, the board set me on the direction of creating a budget that would attract and retain high-quality staff, improve our performance, provide a safe and welcoming environment to all those that come on our campuses, to differentiate funding for schools based on the specific school population. And we've met with varying degrees of success in that space, and this is where we get to unpack that because a lot of this comes down to the discretion that our Board of Supervisors has in terms of the end dollar figure that we receive, and that is our discretionary accounts. So the things that we're going to be covering this evening is discretionary funds that have to do with the two levers that we really get to pull in this space, which is how many people or what kind of support we offer our staff, and then how much we pay them. That is our choice. It is not necessarily something that's programmed by a contract or something that is non-discretionary, but rather how many people we have and how much we pay them is largely within the scope of the board. We'll also tackle a little bit some of our other funds that we have, like nutrition, and then get into some of our unmet needs and the five-year budget. Surprise, surprise, our unmet needs of the five-year budget, they're the same thing. So everything that is not funded in this budget is definitely the can being kicked down the road in the next five, just years, and we are happy to present that for consideration.
Well, we are actually in, like, year two or year three?
So we are in year two of our strategic plan, but our five-year budget becomes a rolling five-year budget, so the years keep getting added on, but since this is our second exercise of this, effectively, we are in the second year of your first five-year budget, and we have not met any of the objectives or goals that we've outlined in that five-year budget. So just as a quick recap of our proposed expenditures, we start this budget process with base budget of $414.6 million. We made some adjustments in the middle of the year with some correction from the state. We discussed our $16.6 million in new non-discretionary expense, which is largely due to two factors: the significant increase of students that we expect from this year to next year, plus some students that showed up this past year that were not in our projection, and then also inflationary factors. So we're encompassing all those, and to do what we did last year again with no price change is $16.6 million, but it does give us a few more bus drivers. Tonight's focus will be largely on the $13.6 in new discretionary expense, which we have pegged for compensation, and we'll unpack that in great detail. So we spent a little bit of time through this, and this is on board docs, and it's also -- Missy, I don't know if everybody got the --
They did, yes.
They did? So, well, this is for the operating budget. Just as a recap, you have two of these. One is for the five-year plan, one is for the operating budget, so I'm going to pass down three of these. Oh, you do have that? Okay, great. Okay, fantastic. And just to recap, this is basically where we are at with contractual extensions based on inflationary values, plus 619 students that we're projecting going into next year, and then an additional 154 students who are not in our projection from the previous year. We have to accommodate for that. The reason that I'm bringing this back up is because according to our staffing standards, that would increase the number of full-time equivalents pretty substantially, but what I am suggesting that we do in this budget to accommodate for that is that we scale back some of that in some strategic areas until we have an offsetting revenue to close the gap. So what does that look like? We are looking at adding in terms of, from an accounting perspective, 773 new students, which accounts for 144 full-time equivalents for us.
I'm guessing modular is passed.
Okay, great.
Both said?
Probably the only one -- I don't know if both said.
It's been the footers.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that's good news. We'll take that. That's going to equivocate to us 22 elementary teachers, six middle school teachers, 13 high school teachers, a bunch of special education teachers, but I want to revisit that special education number because I'm going to peel back some of that in a future slide. A ton of ESAL teachers because that is our fastest-growing student population and requires a lot of additional support. 2.5 counselors, based on how the split is now, but of course, our state legislature has bills that they're considering right now that may increase that number as well. And then paraprofessionals, which I also will come back and take a look at. Addition to all of this are some support positions, primarily in the transportation and human resources space, because we are getting bigger as an organization. We do need to transport more students, and we also have more employee applications to process, and having high teacher turnover and high staff turnover is definitely a factor in those spaces. So that was the non-discretionary portion. Now I want to peel back some of that from a discretionary standpoint by deferring some of the board's adopted staffing standards to reduce costs until we have an offsetting revenue and we can afford it. So what does that look like? Well, we think that we can manage this in a couple of different ways. Hey, come on in, Jennifer.
Hi.
That will help get us from point A to point B until we have a place that we can really afford to add the additional staff per the staffing standards as the board has outlined. The very frustrating part of this is that we initiated some staffing standards and we've deferred finishing our year-one efforts yet another year, and that we'd be deferring again and deferring again, and we'll see that reflected in the five-year budget. The two probably most significant changes is adding one student to class size, which is more of an accounting mechanism than anything else to our fourth and fifth grade classrooms, because five teachers spread across 17 elementary schools is not altogether all that significant, but it really is troublesome for us in the future because we want to maintain a certain set of expectations for what class size looks like at the elementary level, and that has been -- it's hard to regain that ground once you give it up. And at the secondary level, 23 teachers spread across five high schools and eight middle schools, again, is not that significant in terms of totals. However, it is ground that we then have to find a way to make up in the future, so it is giving up ground on class sizes. Now, does that create additional capacity for us in terms of room space? Well, yes, it does. That is an advantage for us, but five elementary school classrooms is not going to change substantively our trailer disposition. And looking at special education, by reverting back to an eight-to-one with three paraprofessionals versus a six-to-one with two paraprofessionals, still preserves a two-to-one ratio of adults to children in the classroom, but it's not our favorable approach because it is, again, ground that we then have to go back and make up in the future. And so as a result of this, instead of adding over 200 positions to accommodate for growth and staffing standards, we are really with a net increase of just 167.1 FTEs when it's all said and done after we reduce 107.5 FTEs, doing some discretionary cutbacks. So this is a little bit painful for us because this is the path forward to supporting our staff. This is the path forward to getting our schools staffed appropriately for the 21st century, but we are also still growing very rapidly, and I don't feel as though that we are taking a step backwards, but it is definitely a sidestep in terms of our staffing. The next big section, other than staffing, has to do with our -- how much we pay our staff. And to fully implement Phase Three of the license scale or the teacher scale would cost us $14.7 million. Now, what that would entail is we would raise our starting salary from $50,000 to $51,000 and then have a 3% step for those with successful years of experience from zero to step 15. What we are proposing, until we have an offsetting revenue to account for this, is that we reduce that to $12 million instead of $14.7 million, and we keep our starting salary flat at $50,000 and just do the step increase for zeros -- from step zero to 15 at 3%, and then beyond that, it is a flat percentage, which is what we have been doing as part of our phased-in approach. This will save us a little bit of money on the front end, but this is something that the board should consider. Should we get an offsetting state revenue that is really substantial enough to cover this cost, we could fully implement Phase Three. Now, the good news with this approach is that if we couldn't afford this and we couldn't get the full Phase Three, it doesn't prevent us from doing Phase Four next year. We could still move forward with that in the adjustment to the scale, but we would have to go back and revisit how we do our starting teacher schedule. So taking a look at this on --
Are you jumping a step or are you combining the steps?
No, we're not combining any steps. Basically, how our phased-in approach looks, and this is kind of the chart, this might help a little bit. If you look at the very, very far left, you'll see the starting salary at step zero is going up just a little bit every year. Now, the red line, which is what our proposed Step Three is, is identical to the green line at the starting scale for this year because we don't have a whole lot of differentiation, and that's the $2.7 million. Now, if we did an additional $2.7 million, the whole scale moves up pretty substantially, and it is a pretty big jump. As it stands right now, you're still getting the effect of the Phase Three, but it's muted a little bit for those in steps zero through 15. Okay. And it doesn't prevent us from doing Phase Four. We just would want to go back and not stay with a $50,000 starting salary. We would want to enhance that somewhat, and there's a price tag that comes with that. So we're still kind of on track, but I will say that it is a little frustrating that there's a $2.7 million gap in us being able to fully implement this. So this is one of those spaces that as we get additional state revenue, because we very conservatively estimated our budget based on the governor's proposed budget, knowing that the legislature is very likely to increase revenue to localities, that this be an area that we go and look at early in that process of doing a budget revision, which brings us to the service scale. So our initial efforts with the service scale, we would want to implement Phase One, which we deferred last year in Phase One, because it looks very similar to what we did for the teachers, and this is a fully fleshed-out phased approach. Right now, this is one of our clerical positions that's highlighted, and you can see it mirrors the teacher scale in terms of its phasing and in terms of its approach. But what we deferred last year was implementing Phase One because we couldn't afford it. At $7 million, it was a very big price tag to be able to pull that off, and with the state's uncertainty in its revenue, it didn't produce enough revenue on the back end mid-year for us to be able to close that gap. So here we are, right back to where we were last year, trying to implement Phase One. Well, right now, you can't afford Phase One until you have an offsetting revenue equivalent to $3.8 million. It would be my recommendation that this be the very first thing that you add back into your budget when there is additional state revenue to offset this. Now, good news, there is a high probability that there will be additional state revenue to offset and make sure that you can add this back into your budget. But what does this look like? So this looks like two things, and you should be very happy with the second thing and not so happy with the first thing. The first thing is the governor's budget proposed a 0% increase for school staff. We are doing a 3% increase just to get us from point A to point B, knowing full well that we would be much better positioned to do Phase One. Hopefully, we can do that.
So that 3% -- I'm sorry, holding questions till the end.
The second thing is that we have a very large portion of our service or non-licensed professionals that are paraprofessionals that serve in the classroom. This is the part that you should be very happy with. One of our budget initiatives in the proposed budget is to increase paraprofessionals pretty dramatically. Right now, our paraprofessionals do not even get compensated at 50% of the teacher scale. This would move our paraprofessionals to a starting salary of an equivalent to 50% of the teacher scale, and here's what we mean by that. Our general education paraprofessionals, our special education of Level One paras, our daily building subs, and our early childhood special education would all be moved dramatically up to that 50% of the teacher scale, which is not a ton of money, but it is a dramatic increase to what they were compensated before. Our Title I paras, our family service workers, would be 53.5% of the teacher scale, our special education Level Two, and job coaches would be at 57% of the teacher scale, and our behavioral support assistants and assistive technology folks will be at 62%. This equates to an average of 9% increase for paraprofessionals. This is long overdue, is what we need to do, is a high priority. So we are making substantial headway into this space, and with the additional $3.8 million from the state, should we get it, or from the locality or from whomever, you should be able to do this and Phase One in addition to that, which would be a substantial repair to our service scales.
We need $6.5 million for those two items.
For the two items, yes. Good news, high probability that we probably land right around there. What about bus drivers? Well, bus drivers, very important role. Right now, they are included in the service scale and would be positively impacted by a Phase One implementation of the service scale. Right now, they are a 3% increase, just like everybody else on the service scale, but there is one addition which will help them pretty significantly, is reducing their contract days from 183 to 180, but still giving them the same salary, which would increase their hourly rate. That's a good thing. This is actually something that our drivers have asked for. I will say that as driver turnover decreases, the need for additional training and professional days also decreases, so this is something that our drivers and attendants have asked for. We are happy to comply and agree to that as well. So in summary, this is what this looks like, and this is the accounting sausage-making that nobody really enjoys, but I think is important to kind of spell out. To implement fully the licensed scale Phase Three would cost us $14.7 million. We can't afford that right now based on the revenue projection that we have today. We do expect that revenue projection to change, but today, to do the modification to Phase Three, we would save $2.7 million. We did a flat 3% increase to our educational supplements. That's for folks that have master's degrees, doctoral degrees, et cetera. That is $300,000 in total. Our non-licensed scale to do a full implementation of Phase One would cost $7 million. To defer Phase One and just do a 3% saves $3.8 million. The good news, there's a high probability that that $3.8 million will show up in state revenue in the next week or so. So to that end, we can look forward to that being something that I would recommend that the board consider as the very first thing that gets added back in. The instructional support scale is our paraprofessionals. This equates to a 9% average increase for our paraprofessionals at the tune of $1.9 million. That is money well spent and long overdue. And then the savings that we get from adjustments to our staffing standards, again, we add it in the non-discretionary, and then we pull it out a little bit in the discretionary, saves us another $3.8 million, which brings our discretionary expense to $13.6 million. Okay. Very briefly, this is pretty vanilla, and the board is used to seeing these accounts, so I will go pretty quickly with the exception of the last one, which is brand-new. Looking at our grants account, our budgeted revenues equal our budgeted expenditures for both grants and capital projects. This is not anything crazy. It's an increase of about $1.4 million in new grant revenue. Congratulations, yea, us. That's a very positive thing, but for the most part, this is not anything super exciting. It is what you are used to seeing in the accounts balance. So in terms of our nutrition funds and our fleet services funds, again, it's money in and it's money out. Our nutrition budget is $24.5 million to feed the children. That is what we bring in, and that is what we put out. We are not expecting a significant surplus in nutrition services in the future because obviously we've been also carrying meal debt as well. Fleet services, this has gone up a little bit because this is a shared service that we have with county government, and so their average increase in terms of the services that they provide is a very reasonable 6% given kind of where we are at right now, and that's at $5 million flat across the board. Health benefits, our health benefits fund, I got to tell you, Chris Fulmer does not get enough credit for him and his team and how well they manage our health benefits fund. They do a great job, and because we are self-insured, this does require some management. We still have some claim payouts from prior years because we are self-insured, but we're looking at a savings of about $200,000 from this past year, which is pretty good. Very proud of that. But this is something that we do have to watch because right around this time is when we get our renewal from Anthem. So this will be one of those, like, budget adjustments. Every year, we start with the number that is our best guess, and then when we get to budget reconciliation down in April, this is the number that tends to jump a little bit, and we have to find some kind of way to manage that. Workers' compensation, the same thing. We seem to keep this in check pretty well, and so we do a pretty good job. Our new guy, the Academy of Technology and Innovation. We are the bank for the UMW Lab School, and as the bank, it is money in and money out, but as the bank, it is one of our accounts very technically as their fiscal agent, so we record it as a new fund, and we don't really have any discretion on it. It's not something that this board can appropriate or really do much with, but it is the regional school board that Ms. Randall is on and is now the chair of that controls these funds, but a good way to think of this as us serving as their bank. This is probably a great place to pause before we switch over to the five-year plan, but the five-year plan is basically all of the things that we identified as unfunded requests in the Fiscal 25 budget that we had planned for in Fiscal 25 and were not able to find an offsetting revenue for, and so as a consequence of that, we now are placing into a five-year plan of how we might pay for that over Fiscales 26, 27, 28, and 29. I'm going to draw the board's attention to just two things on this as you consider what this looks like. The first thing I want to draw your attention to is that the state legislature is considering a 1% sales tax to offset school construction costs that, if applied to the school division, could be supplanted for our 3R or major maintenance expense, and the first availability of those funds would be Fiscal 27, so we have placed that in Fiscal 27. We still are recommending funding the 3R or major maintenance account, so we do have a $2 million placeholder in the Fiscal 26 budget, but in general, we wanted to make sure that we were accounting for that. We were wanting to make sure that we were accounting for new schools that were opening and some of the operating expense for new schools, making sure that we were accounting for technology replacement, safety enhancements, and all the things that the board has identified and that staff have identified as real significant needs that we have looking into the next few years. You will conclude, it's hard to believe, you will conclude your strategic plan, your Elevate Stafford Strategic Plan, halfway through this projected five-year plan. So at the end of Fiscal 27, you are already going to be starting a new strategic planning process for your next strategic plan, and there's a lot of things that we identified tied to this strategic plan that are now in outline years beyond your strategic plan in Fiscal 28 and Fiscal 29. The second thing that I'll point out here is some of the factors that we used to explain some of this. The percent change, it's really just the last three lines at the bottom, the percent change to the budget year over year. You'll see that we're projecting a percent change to our budget of 9.5%, and when you take into account inflation plus growth, and you take those -- and you take those factors out, that is not a significant growth in our budget. It's actually a very small percentage growth in our budget. And that equates to our catch-up percentage or how much we're funding above inflation. So at 2% growth and a 4.5% catch-up percentage, that's really only a 2.5% increase to our budget when you take out those things. So it's a little painful to look at that because it may seem as though we're trying to grow our budget very rapidly, but the reality is that it's not. It's just not, and the math bears that out. So I will stop. And this time, it's for the board to discuss direction that you want me to take or answer questions and then also unpack the five-year operating budget handout, which looks eerily similar. We'll have to do reverse colors next year, I think, to separate the fiscal '25 one from the five-year budget because they do look very similar. But this is more than happy to answer any questions the board may have this time.
Dr. Chase, did you have any questions?
Yeah, so on the, let me find where I shot it down. On the compensation service scale, I was a little confused. So across the board, 3%. Do we currently have that in our budget or we don't?
We do.
So that's without any modification. We have a 3%. Okay. And then in terms of the different percentages on the teacher's scale, do some of these positions already have stipends attached to them?
Yeah, so that is part of the like the educational supplements and stipends. So we didn't really touch stipends.
So we're giving, say, a behavioral support assistant or a special ed level two teacher is getting 57% or 62% of the teacher's scale and they're getting a stipend?
Those positions typically don't have stipends because they're paraprofessionals. So.
I thought we did give a stipend for.
We used to give, I don't know if it's $1,000.
So this is factoring that in, that is factoring in the differential. So do you want to opine on that?
Sure, I can address that. So it is based on the percentages that you saw are based on the base teacher scale without stipends baked in. The difference for the paraprofessionals that are licensed, or sorry, that are in special education positions is based on the scale here that they would be placed on. So in other words, the stipend of the teacher doesn't follow to the paraprofessional?
But we used to give a stipend to certain paraprofessionals. Are we no longer giving paraprofessionals special?
So this is a way to grow the differential. So for example, if you were a paraprofessional and you are a level-two special education paraprofessional, you are working in a very high-needs classroom, you were providing a lot of support. You've got your salary plus a dollar figure on top of that for that extra support that you were doing. So you've got this paraprofessional salary plus a dollar figure on top of that, it was a flat dollar figure. This is a little bit different because you not only get more money, but you also get your differential, that additional money is a percentage, not a flat dollar figure. So that is going to grow with your years of experience.
So we're getting rid of the stipends?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand.
So it's basically a 7% stipend?
Yes.
Because a paraprofessional not in that level-two class would get 50% of the scale.
Correct.
But a level-two would get a 7% added.
Yeah.
And that means it goes towards like retirement and stuff.
Absolutely. And that is the big difference is that it's credible comp.
I just wanted to know whether we were doing it or not.
And then how much are the stipends that we're paying now? Because that's, you know, we can't double count.
That's right.
The additional cost. If we're taking something away, then that's a credit.
Yeah.
You know, do we know how many stipends are?
It's all factored in. Yeah.
Right, but how much are we paying now in those stipends?
So I should clarify that the structure you see here, there being different pay scales based on position, that actually is the structure we have now. It's just that the scales aren't tied to the teacher scale in the way that's proposed here. So we are not paying stipends to paraprofessionals presently.
But it's a differential.
It's a differential, that's right. So the structure of having different pay scales based on the specific paraprofessional assignment, that is still true. The difference here is that by tying it to the teacher's scale, there will be more progression for more experienced paraprofessionals, particularly for those that are in special education classes that we think is going to make it more sustainable for people who are in those positions.
And then another question I have is the Academy of Technology and Innovation. Has the SNAFU gotten corrected in terms of the university?
University control, the legislative fix?
No, it hasn't. Although I think that they are working on a very different workaround right now, but no.
No, okay, I just was curious. And then on the five-year plan, I see that FY '26 is going to be an 8% change and FY '27 is a 14% change. What is the rationale there? Is that because of staff being hired for new schools? Is that because we're trying to get the pay scales settled out? What is driving those two kind of standout years of increase?
Mainly you've got a couple of different things. So it's actually FY '27 is going to be your big year where you're opening school buildings. Relatively speaking, it's not as big of a number, although your biggest number in FY '27 is actually the major maintenance expense, but you may also have an offsetting revenue. So that might help tremendously. Basically, why '26 is so big is it's all the stuff that was more or less deferred from this year to next year. So it's like kicking, it is the mathematical accounting equivalent of kicking the can down the road. And then spreading out some of those expenses over the next several fiscal years so that it's not all trying to land in one year is what the exercise looks like. But it's like the problems aren't going away.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the really significant rub.
Dr. Warner, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I was wondering, we deferred a lot of, we deferred some of our staffing standards from last year this year. Now we're deferring again. So I'm just curious, how many deferments or what's that rolling cost going to be? Can we get like an accounting of that? Because it would be really nice to be able to break that out and see what we're, I don't know if I'm making that clear or if it's clear as much.
No, you are. And.
You know, because we keep saying, oh, it's like we're cutting back 107 FTEs
Right.
from what we wanted. How many did we cut last year? And, you know, it's this like.
Or is that last year and this year?
Well, and it's tough too because we would feel this more significantly if we weren't growing. But because we're growing, we're still adding FTEs.
Right.
So no matter what, there's an add, but it's not the add that it should be. It's less than the add that it should be.
It's an add in reaction to students, not an add in reaction to a staffing standard that we're trying to establish.
This is like three people per building then, right?
Right.
Like that?
And it's not going to really shake out that way.
I know, but just when you think about how many campuses we have.
Correct.
I'm just wondering, we have these staffing standards that we're deferring.
Yes.
Where are those people not being deployed that they should be? And is they equitably distributed across all of our schools? Or are we filling some of those positions because we have?
No, so reducing the standard means it will absolutely be equitably applied. That is the benefit of having staffing standards is that no matter what, is that everybody shares the joy and the pain at the same time because that is what the minimum standard is for what we resourced that particular classroom, that particular school, that particular space. Now, it's in some pretty logical places that we have spent an awful lot of time investing in, things like class size, things like special education, things like additional resources in terms of combating student behaviors. I got to tell you, you know, we have invested in changing our student code of conduct and enforcing it. There are consequences with that in terms of what we need to provide to the schools in terms of level of support. Well, we've been deferring that level of support. So, you know, at some point, you know, we're going to hit this crossroads where some of the things that we're trying to do are not going to be sustainable if we're not going to be able to provide either the mental health supports, the school counseling, the extra, you know, dean of students or whatever to help support some of the classroom behaviors. It's going to be problematic.
And the only other question I have, so we're keeping our first-year teachers. Are year zero teachers basically static? Unless we have more funding and then they'll get that bump based on plugging that money back in.
So everybody will realize some kind of compensation if they've had a successful year with us.
Right, but new teacher, I'm talking about new hires.
So a brand-new teacher coming in this year will have the same starting salary as a brand-new teacher last year, but that brand-new teacher last year will now have one year of experience and will realize a step increase of 3%. So.
What percentage of our teachers last year were first-year teachers? Do we have any idea, Patrick?
Van Forman.
I will say that.
33% were five-years ago.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm just wondering what our first-year hires look like, especially as we're opening new schools. I would imagine we are going to be.
And this is a problematic thing for us because we did have to make an adjustment.
They come here because the teacher shortage is nationwide, so.
But this is the problematic issue that we've been dealing with is that our cost basis for what a teacher costs has changed in the wrong direction over the last few years because our teachers are getting more experienced. It's good because it means that we are getting teachers that are experienced from other places, but it's bad because there's not new people entering the profession. And the lion's share of our hires are not coming from universities. They're coming from neighboring school divisions. So that's both a good and a bad thing. It's good that we're getting more experienced teachers. It's bad that we don't have folks that have the potential to do a career with us and candidly, they're less expensive.
Yeah, I'm just looking at this 2026 number and I'm thinking we're going to fall off a cliff because there's no way it's going to happen. And then what? You know, we're kicking a lot of cans down the road because there's just no way that it's going to be.
Dr. Warner, data centers.
Not next year.
Ms. Randall?
So when you were talking about our 12% of our, we have a 12% provisional teacher?
Yes.
Okay. What do they, they come in at a starting teacher's salary? They come?
It depends.
They treated no different?
It depends on their previous experience. We do have some provisions to allow for some service credit based on their previous career and what they've done, I think.
Overwhelmingly, they'll come in at step zero on the scale.
Okay. And then the other one was, oh, in the grant-funded positions, are we feeling really comfortable about that?
Well, those are transitioning from grant funding to our local funds because the grants are longer support.
I thought that there were some that we were actually going to have as a grant.
That's primarily the ESSER funds and those are coming to an end.
Okay.
So that's goodbye.
Thank you.
Goodbye, ESSER. Thanks for visiting. See you at the next pandemic.
Yeah, good.
Ms. Healy?
I know, right, Ms. Healy? Deep sigh.
Where do I start? I'm beginning. Well, you know, I just want to note, what you're seeing here is somewhat what the experience was when the steps were done away with before. Because you got behind, you got behind, you got behind, and you really would never catch up. There were unrealistic expectations. So there's only one thing that you can do when you get to the end of the clip. So that's just an observation. And I think you recognize that in your presentations now.
Absolutely.
These are not choices that are made.
Lately.
Willingly.
Yeah.
But I want to understand the licensed versus the non-licensed. And I know the proposal is to defer a portion of the license, but we're still putting a significant amount of money in to get to a part of, is it Phase Three? Correct? All right, so we're not quite there, but we're getting close to Phase Three
That's right.
with the license, which is admirable. And I'm really glad you're positive in thinking we're going to get more, you know, that'll get us there. But I'm disgusted about the non-licensed because we're not even on Phase One.
Correct.
So how do we?
How do we fix that?
Well, how do we balance? I mean, we have competing demands. Yes, the teachers, the heart of the organization, you know, the classroom. But the teachers can't do their job without the service personnel, you know, whether they're in the office, in the classroom, in the gap, anywhere. So, you know, my angst is with not even starting on Phase One with the non-licensed. I mean, the 3% across the board, it sounds, you know, it sounds like we're doing something, but we're not even on Phase One. So how do we balance that?
It's a difficult question, and I think I've got a good answer for you. The good news is I think this is one of those rare situations where you can actually have your cake and eat it too. Unfortunately, the time on the clock is not playing to our advantage at this particular moment because I think that there's a world of difference between now and two weeks from now in terms of our state revenue picture. So the reality is, is I think you can fund both. And I think that you can fund both fully. But based on what we have right now and the information that we have right now, you have limited resources. So based on that, you've got to make some tough choices. And so here are basically the strategic options that you have available to you. Jam on the brakes. Don't do any phases whatsoever. Fund the staffing component. Don't even touch compensation. Do like the governor proposes in his budget and just do a half a percent or a 1% bonus and don't do anything for compensation. Leave everything as it is. That's one strategic option. Another strategic option is that you can do halfway steps on your scale and do some kind of movement on your licensed scale and some kind of movement on your service scale. Perfect world, I can tell you right now that Phase Six of any salary, whatever we do, is to connect your licensed scale to your non-licensed scale so that they move together in the future. 100% that is the right thing to do down the road. But our supervisors have asked us to do things in chapters, not to do things all at one time. And so that's a long-term solution, not a short-term solution. Well, which do you pick? Do you invest in your service scale and fund it fully? Because you could do that and get them onto Phase One. Do you invest in your licensed scale and fund it almost fully? Yes, you could do that. You could even fund your licensed scale fully, but it would come at the expense of something else. It would come at the expense of paraprofessionals. It would come at the expense of your service scale. You could fully fund Phase Three. And so what I'm offering and what I'm proposing for the board's consideration is, as a provisional measure, until you do know what your revenue looks like, is that we do something for everyone. The reason that the licensed scale makes sense to invest in, one, it's our core business model. It's what we do. Investing in the classroom is important. Maintaining that structure is important. Getting us moved along on that structure is important. And if you fall short of the $2.7 million, we still have not lost a year's worth of progress. That's huge because adding a flat percentage, you lose a year's worth of progress because you haven't done any structural repairs. Now with the service scale. Now with the service scale, doing what the governor's proposed budget suggests is not something that we would recommend, we actually emphatically say that zero percent for any employee group is not an option, and so we looked at what we could do for our service scale and we figured out that we could do two things. One, we could make the kind of repair that the board wanted to make to paraprofessionals last year, check, done, that was a high priority last year, it got bumped to this year, it's a high priority this year, we absolutely agree, we'll make it happen, and then the second thing is use whatever available resources we have remaining to bridge some of that gap until we have the revenue to cover for phase one. Could you make some modifications and adjust, reduce your, your, your license scale phase three? You could, I wouldn't recommend it, because if you did, you would have to go backwards and it would mean that you would either pay teachers less, or you would either have to modify their scale, or you would either go to a flat percentage, any one of those require a correction the following year. So, what we're bringing forward for consideration, and to me, this is the question of all questions for tonight, because this is the decision point, is like, how do we navigate this with the available resources that we have until we've identified an additional revenue to get us to the next point? So, you can't drop your starting salary reasonably, there's, there's, we're, we're just not in the place, in the marketplace.
We have, you have by not increasing the fifty thousand.
Correct.
You're, you're, you're actually dropping it, which that concerns me.
It is.
I think you're right.
But, but, but it comes to the tune of, of a cost too, so without reducing something else, you know, you, you've, I'm not sure that you'd wanna pull back, um, some, some other category or go deeper into your staffing beyond what we've already done, which is your other option.
Well, how many phases are we behind with the non-licensed, or did we plan to-
Five.
-start phase one? I mean, okay, so, so we're, you know, we did phase one, we did phase two, we're partially, pretty significantly doing phase three, I would say, if you're only reducing-
Yeah.
You know, two point seven out of-
You're there.
Seventeen million, so, a modest reduction of phase three for licensed, but yet we're five phases behind for the non-licenced, how can we justify that? I, and, and this is a rhetorical question, I'm not asking you, but, and, and that's, and, and I certainly respect your opinion, your expertise, but I feel that, you know, it's something that, you know, we need to, to, to grapple with.
This is like a water sink, you know, you grab it, falls out.
But we're five phases behind for the non-licensed, and how, I, I know we're, we're, are we behind on the teachers? Are we, are just as partial?
Yeah, I think you're behind everywhere.
No, but I mean on your phases, on phases.
No, you're, you're, you've, you have adopted one phased, uh, you, you've adopted one phase a year for the last two years.
Okay.
And this is-
So we're just two years behind, working on a third year behind for this?
Correct, but for the non-licensed, you're starting from zero.
But you're saying we're five phases behind?
Uh, for, for, for the non-licensed, you're five phases behind, so.
Okay, alright, well, that, that answers-
Because we haven't even started.
And that's something we have to, we have to deal with, but that answers my question, thank you. The, the other thing is the, and I, I think Dr. Warner hit it, hit that can right with the toe, you know, how, how realistic is it to even show in here a proposed eighteen percent increase next year? I mean, is that realistic, and, and if it's, if it's not realistic, where does that put us in terms of the expectations that, you know, people, you know, will have for us to be catching up? I mean, I'm, I'm the realist, um, I'm, you know, not the, not the optimist, but, you know.
I, I don't think it's realistic, however, um, I think it is important that you communicate your needs and that that eighteen percent is the buildup of three years now of deferred priorities, not just one year, and-
And that's why I'd kinda like to look at what we deferred in the cost so that we can explain that.
Yeah.
Well, then, then that's, then, then really, if it's not an expectation, that, that is what would be needed-
Sure.
To, to catch up, I mean, if, if we, if we define it as what is needed to be where we-
We're harmonizing, yeah.
It's where we should be if we were able to follow our five-year plan, I'm okay with that because that shows, you know, where, where we need to be, but I don't wanna say that that's a percent change, you know, proposed change, because it's just not gonna happen.
And so you've got that, actually, it's the very last line, and, and that's your, that's the differential right there, so you take out inflationary increases and it's really a thirteen point zero one percent catch-up.
Well, but it's shown as proposed, I mean-
Well, it's all proposed, because you're not going to adopt a five-year plan, it's really just a planning tool for your consideration.
Okay.
I will say that there is a column that we should probably add to this document, and it's something that you've added to your capital improvement plan, and I think that would actually enhance this, and I'll absolutely do this for the next version, is when were these budget initiatives first proposed? So that we go back and we look at when these first, when, when were they first considered by the board as a budget initiative, and how many years have they really been deferred? And so, how, how many years has this been-
Are you talking about the five-year plan?
Yeah, I'm talking about the five-year plan.
Yeah, because I think we should focus on the five-year plan, because we were all here for that five-year plan, you know, it's our five-year, it's our five-year plan.
It was something that the board supervisors asked us for too.
Right, and they, they ask for it.
So the goal of trying to meet those needs-
That's right.
Because they knew what we were gonna expect, but now we keep adding to that expectation every year because we deferred so many times.
Right, so the, the other side of looking at is what did we not do?
Yes.
But, but that, I think that would be-
That helps needs versus what we deferred.
Because then we're acknowledging, you know, what we, what we did not do, and it's, it's all about, um, it's all about choices, so, so my, my biggest, you know, issue is going to be this, how do we, you know, how do, how do, how do we balance the competing needs?
And I agree with you, I think that we need to absolutely address the non-licensed scale, because we have keep, we do keep deferring it, problem is that we're competing for teachers and they're licensed, which makes them harder to get and harder positions to fill than unlicensed.
So I had a, a quick question, so I, I had asked, and it was in the bulletin, I had asked for our scale relative to Spotsy's scale, so Spotsy offers more for their first year teachers, but we offer more for our third-year teachers.
Yes.
So, what happens if Patrick gets all kinds of applicants who are third-year teachers and not very many applicants who are first-year teachers, what happens to our budget?
Well, it, it is increased our-
She just had her hand upside in the left ear back.
I was just gonna say that the vacancies aren't budgeted for a first-year teacher, they're budgeted for like, more of like the average, so typically we budget for teachers currently out of five-year masters, so that kind of gives you a buffer that, because some are gonna be junior teachers, some are new, so that ends up being about the average salary, and I look at that for all the vacancies and adjust them for where we're like in the market for each year, and that's about standard for teachers currently.
Okay, so we could conceivably just not be hiring first-year teachers anymore?
But, but this is a, an important point, is that-
And not deploying.
Our cost basis has gone up over the last few years because the average cost of our teachers has gone up over the past few years because the average cost is based on the years of experience.
We have a cap, you know, like you mentioned with Prince William, they have a fifteen-year cap.
Yeah, we, we have some-
Like if you come in with thirty years, you can still only be hired in a fifteen-year cap.
A few years back, we allowed the superintendent for, for hard-to-play positions to be able to discretionary do that.
And we do have some internal controls at twenty years of experience, if I'm not mistaken, but I will say this, this labor market, everything is hard to staff, so we're, we're kinda, we're kinda there, so.
I, I would like us to, when we circle back, I would like to look at that first-year teacher salary, I just don't think it's conscientable to leave a salary the same from one year to the next when we all know about inflation and, and, and it's just gonna, why is it gonna-
Well, if we're gonna start that, we're only doing a three percent raise and we're calculating five percent inflation, so we're decreasing everybody by two percent already.
Well, well, not the teachers though, the teachers are-
No, that is the teachers.
Yeah, that is the teachers, you know, those teachers.
I thought, I thought there was an average, um, I thought you said there was an average, um-
Average?
That's the average increase.
Right.
But, but keep in mind, and here's, here's how I'm showing you this, right?
Some are more, some are less.
Correct, and so as you bend the scale, your, your teachers with more experience are earning more now because we are bending the scale.
Right.
So, I, I agree with you, Ms. Healy, that we do need to, to raise our starting teacher salary, but to do that comes at a price tag that has a ripple effect, and it's a two point seven million dollar ripple effect. Good news-
You might get it.
Yes, I actually think all of this conversation is academic, but, but, but I think it's noteworthy to say for our constituents and for the public and for our employees, you know, we, we think that this is an academic exercise because we do think that there is ultimately gonna be an offsetting revenue that is going to be able to get us to phase one for service and fully implement phase three for, um, our licensed staff.
But maybe not.
But maybe not.
But that's gonna be after we have to pass the budget.
Correct, correct, correct.
So, so we have to deal with what we have.
At the moment.
We can hope for the best and-
Yes.
Sounds, it sounds very promising.
It does sound promising.
But, you know, then that means we can only even do better for-
That's right.
Anyways.
Yeah, and I think our, I think we have enough reason to be optimistic, at least on the state revenue perspective, but without reducing in another area, you, you really can't make, you can't really cut that deal without trading something off of the table at this point.
And, and of course, we don't even know what the local-
Right.
I, I mean, how much of a shift and change.
We just have the county administrator's pers- uh, perspective at this time.
Yes.
He's committed to the dollar for your-
Probably not gonna be more.
Uh, what's that?
No, but I'm not even sure it's gonna be that.
Probably not gonna be more.
Maybe not, yeah, but, but going with his projection is not dissimilar from us going with the governor's projected, uh, revenue, it's the best information we have at the time to, to make the projection, so even though it's a conservative projection on the state revenue standpoint, maybe an over-projection on the county side, either way, we, we still have to, to, to make sure that we have something that we can bring forward for, for discussion, and there's no lack of clarity in what your intentions are in terms of what you should tackle first and what you should go after next and what you should go after, after that, um, you know, obviously, this is, this is open to your final ratification in April, but you also could adopt a budget on February thirteenth, two weeks later say the state made a modification, we would like to amend our adopted budget and then send a different budget to, uh, the county administrator that has a different, um, amount of revenue for him to bring to the board supervisors.
When you do that additional, um, information, would you put for the non-licensed scale the cost of each phase that has been deferred?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And, and also the, the dates that they would have been implemented had we been able to follow through with our plan, you know, on these things, I think it's not just what we deferred, it's when, how long has it been deferred?
So, I think most of what I have to ask is really tacking on all this, and I'm trying to see if my questions get answered, like through the conversation.
Oh, I'm done.
No, no, which is why I'm not asking them, because I was waiting to see, because the conversation was really good, but let me understand one thing, if we were fully funded, I can only, like, you know, calculate it's about five hundred and sixteen million this year, like, if that brought us all the way up to include everything.
Yes.
What's the cost saving for the next few years? Is there any? Right, as we're looking at what the inflationary rates are now, we're bringing up our money on, on sort of these recurring rotations, but, but we're desperately trying to catch up, so, so if we caught up-
Right.
What's it like moving forward? Is there any flexibility there? Do we save any money over the course of time? Like, what's that look like?
You probably don't save any money, but here's what you do, is you create stability and the percentage increase diminishes sharply.
Okay.
So, your, your asks start to look a lot less dramatic-
Okay.
-when you get to a place where we're fully funded, so.
So they look more like our twenty-eight, twenty-nine years, we're in the middle.
Right, yes, so, so a good example of that is just what Dr. Warner pointed out, is so you get to the end of the five-year plan and that looks like normal, whatever normal is, you're dealing with growth and you're dealing with the inflationary rate, and then whatever programmatic enhancements the board gets really excited about that you wanna fully fund, so.
Two and a half percent and one and a quarter percent.
Very reasonable, very reasonable.
One and a half percent, very reasonable changes.
So, that would be the goal, is to get to very reasonable, but there's this huge hump you've gotta get over, and realistically, that puts you back in the middle of the pack in terms of where we are in terms of state funding, in terms of state average per pupil expenditure, if you get back over that hump, to bring us up to the average would be an additional seventy-three million, our unfunded requests, requests are sixty-three million.
Right.
Very reasonable.
We're not even asking for the whole time.
We're not even asking for, for the state average, we're not even close to asking for the state average, so if anything, we're exercising a tremendous amount of good stewardship, but it is this very monumental hump that we've gotta get over to get from point A to point B.
Okay, so one of us needs to win the Powerball lottery and then donate the winnings directly back to the state.
But you gotta win it every year.
You gotta win it every year.
You gotta win it every year.
You can't fund sustaining expenses for one-time money.
But if you're lucky, go for it.
You can build a new hardwood.
I could get a, oh, I could, I could get, uh, well, I was, all right, so, so that makes, that, I mean, that helps me to understand, that, that's sort of the overwhelming-
Even if you invested it, it's only about ten, fifteen percent a year, it's not gonna cover you.
Um, I mean, 'cause it is what, you know, when you're looking at this, the absurdity and the jumps is stunning.
Yes.
Like, it is truly stunning, and then, so just to think about, I'm not saying that it's easy to level it off, but it did come up in our budget town hall, like, if you could just get us up to here so that we're not const- constantly swimming upstream, for lack of a better word, um, I do feel too like waiting on the state money is like standing over a black hole and like tempting it not to suck you in, right? And just feeling like, yeah, you know, like, what are you gonna do, so, so I don't necessarily like that either, but, but what, I keep going back to grant funds, I know we're losing Esser, I know we have some in here, but are, is there nothing, like, on, on the level of recurrent grant-based things that we can look into that will help staff, even special things like social workers and all that other stuff, and can we not access those grants? I know, you know where I'm headed with this more so on the health side of the fence, but there has to be some educationally focused health grant money out there that we can access.
There's a little bit of an adage, it takes money to, to make money, um, and, and there's-
Oh, sorry.
There's something to that, that even if we, let's say we won a grant, that there would be some cost associated with managing the grant, and we do have a team that does chase grants, and even with the team that chases grants, and they have had great success with that-
Yeah, I mean-
We're still not able to capture the, the level of dollar amount because of, of the fact that we're competing with everybody else for the same things.
I mean, it's, of course, I'm not gonna be, it's definitely dead, but, um, alright, so just to go back and clarify for me, so the, you said the bus drivers are getting less dated but the same money, at the same-
And a three percent increase on top.
Right, but at the same time, we're giving teachers more students, what does that equal out to in terms of like hours of work, like additional hours of work and that kind of thing that takes away from even the three percent that we're proposing for them?
It's very hard to quantify, but I would, I would equate it to this, is that it's very hard to notice the difference between one year to the next if you are going to mess with class size on a small scale.
Okay.
But if you do it every year over a half decade, the cumulative effect is dramatic and, and almost-
Impactful?
Almost unrecoverable, honestly, so.
Right, like, if I have one person come to me and say, can I please, please, please add your class, I'll say yes, if I have five people come say, please, please, please let me in, as I say no.
Yeah, that's too much.
Yeah, the other problem with grant funding is it's not often a continuous source, because usually-
It's usually five-year cycles, yeah.
Even if, even if, like, I know with Head Start, they've been getting a grant to pay for health insurance for some of the students, those, they had them and they renewed them every year for several years and now they're no longer renewable.
So how many classrooms does adding one student, I, I can't remember if you said this, oh, five, that's five, it seems as five classrooms or this space of-
Just five classrooms and five teachers for the two grades.
Four and five, it seems five classrooms, just.
So, so keep in mind too, we-
That's a lot.
There is no, there is no like three-quarters student or, or, you know, so-
Three-fifths of a student.
Yeah, so we, we, um, this is, this is mathematical to a certain degree, so we set our staffing, uh, calculations based on the number of students per classroom per grade, and you've seen this, it's been included in the bulletin, it's very elaborate. And you've seen this, it's been included in the bulletin, it's very elaborate. So changing the setting to add one student at um at the four to five only had a net impact of a handful of classrooms.
Okay.
Which is good.
Right.
Because it means that the other fourth and fifth grade classrooms throughout the division were within the bounds that they could have handled that. Because think about it like this, you got an elementary school, they have seven um, they have seven uh fourth grade classrooms, right? To change the class size is not adding one student, it's adding seven students. Does that make sense? Because you've got seven classrooms.
Seven classrooms, right.
So if you were gonna add two students per classroom, it's fourteen students, you know, so forth and so on. So we're we're actually able through through some large numbers to to spread students out. It's kind of like um uh the seven hundred and and seventy kids that we're getting effectively from last year's projection to next year's projection. That's a lot of kids. Well, they don't all show up in the same place, thank goodness.
Yeah.
Because if they did.
Or at the same time.
Or at the same time.
Right.
But thank goodness, because if they did, we'd have to put a school wherever that location is.
Right.
Um, and we'd have to build it instantly because that's an entire school's worth of kids at one time. But they're spread out across the county, they're wherever the houses are, they're wherever the people are. So we we do have a little bit of gamesmanship in the fact that your high traffic zones are gonna be disproportionately affected and some schools not impacted at all.
All right, that was all I had.
It's a good question. It's a lot.
I know, it's a lot.
It's definitely a lot. This is your three for me, so don't feel like you're.
You don't have to either, it's fine.
Yeah, you don't have to. It's a lot to do.
I just don't want to leave you out, but I don't want to put you on the spot either.
It's just so many information, I I'm having a hard time understanding it all. But I do understand that it's under.
Just take away that we don't have enough money and you're set, you're at the same level as the rest of us. We're all in the same.
We don't have enough money, but we're prioritizing our teacher scale and trying to at least get started on our our non-teaching.
Lauren, did you have any questions?
I'm sorry.
No, you're totally fine.
Um, if the students were to um maybe help out with, is it possible for students to help out with the amount of like raising?
Yes, so um, that's very generous. And um, I I think that any amount of fundraising definitely helps our school system. But I will say that I struggle with this as a parent too in asking myself, what do I want my kids to be focused on? And I want you to be focused on learning. And I want you to be focused on your classes. And I want you to be focused on uh being prepared to be a great adult, not necessarily worrying about uh the money about the school system. And so that's a that's a really tough thing because I think that you guys would be amazing fundraisers and I think our student body would be amazing fundraisers. But I also think that the amount that you could raise for the amount of effort that you would have to put in to raise a small amount may not be worth it to you in terms of what you would give up by focusing on your studies and the opportunity cost of what it would cost you to have your attention divided between worrying about what your parents and your teachers and your principals and your school board should be worried about versus what you should be caring about and caring about what happens in your school.
But there is something you can do, is you do have a right to advocate for the school's needs.
Yes.
And to talk about the impact of crowded classrooms, the impact of having teachers that maybe aren't licensed in the field that they're trying to teach.
Or long-term subs.
Or long-term subs. Those are things that you can get a firsthand account to, to your elected leaders that will help us in trying to fill some of these gaps.
And when you're eighteen, vote.
And when you're eighteen, vote.
Um, I'm sorry, do you want to repeat the first part of that again?
Advocacy. So you can you can go to school board meetings, you can go to board of supervisor meetings. You can advocate your opinion, you can send emails, you can ask your friends to send emails. You can even draft talking points and hand them out and say, hey, if we want to fix this problem in our schools, this is something that we can do. And it may have a greater impact on on that because it gives the board of supervisors a perspective that they may not see when your parents are coming and advocating.
So Dr. Warner is pointing out who you should email. And on the back of this handout, Jenny, you could get your friends to email the people on the back of this page to tell them how important um having a great education means to you.
And I I would also add something that doesn't cost anything is that if the students showed their appreciation to the teachers, to the staff, you know, the people that are there every day, that would go a long way.
A smile and a thank you.
Thank you notes, thank yous are always appreciated.
You get get through the day. That a lot of times it's it's discouraging to be in these jobs because, you know, there's there's more stress, there's more demands. But then, you know, a lot of teachers, if they get they get like a little, a note from a parent, you know, thank you.
Or an email.
Or or a student, thank you. It it helps. And that doesn't cost anything. That's that's more a environment um in, you know, asset. But if 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 there, I think if our students, you know, really want to recognize the the efforts that the teachers and and all of the support staff put in, you know, that would be a good way to 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 show it at at zero cost, as your smile.
Yep.
But thank you.
Um, I had just a couple of quick questions, most of mine are answered already. I wanted to um do kind of a callback to an effort that Dr. Young brought to my attention and I brought forward to Fab on um salary for the CTTs and ITRTs. I forget where in the service license, unlicense, those employees fall and how they're impacted by what we're asking for in our budget.
We actually have them as a separate line item and it it actually has landed in your five-year budget. It was one of the unfunded uh needs. So there's gonna be just your regular one right here, so this this handout right here. Oh, Lord, ask me, is that a rephrase?
Yeah.
Sorry, we didn't put this at uh Ms. Healy print size this time.
Oh, my gosh.
So about um about halfway.
I don't have that middle sheet.
It's in the five twenty-five.
It's five twenty-five.
It's in the budget system.
It's the one that looks identical to the one that you have.
I don't have it.
Yeah, well, I don't have it.
I don't have either.
Well, here, I can't read mine. This will get you soon.
I don't have that either.
So this this was from our our um original budget presentation. And a couple of the things that we have, some priority pieces that were not funded.
Was included in the sixty-three million.
Yes.
Uh, CTE co-curricular stipends, is that what?
It's about halfway down, it's a technical adjustment.
No, it's the it's the technical adjustment, CTT, IRT.
CTT, IRT. And this would extend their contract length an additional month.
Which is imperative, I think.
We absolutely recommend that we should do this.
Yeah.
This this is a good idea. They're absolutely right to ask for this. It does cost a quarter of a million dollars.
But where are they as far as salary? Are they service? Are they paraprofessional? Or I assume they're not licensed unless they are?
ITRTs are licensed, CTTs are service. Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, and then there's the question is if we could boost the pay to twice a month, would that offset for some employees the raise because that would be more valuable to them in some ways than.
Others.
Others, you know.
And I think you might get a mixed response because it's there's some generational things where some of our more experienced or.
Well, and if you have two-income household or one-income.
Yeah, it's very different, yeah. But but it is a priority and it's something that that rightfully they've asked for. The the infuriating thing for us is that our county counterparts have a twice monthly pay cycle. We do not. They have a fully staffed payroll department. We do not. We have very deliberately kept the size of our central administration small in favor of investing in the classroom. That comes at a consequence. This consequence is we're not able to provide the same level of service that our county counterparts are able to provide.
This is six hundred thousand. The last time I remember it was eight hundred thousand, so has that gone down?
Yeah, it's gone down. Actually, our first estimate was over a million dollars in what we in what we thought it would would be able to do. But our payroll staff seems to think that they can get it done for for a little bit less.
Do we have any surveys or something that would respond to Dr. Warner's question? You know, how many, how many of the staff would always benefit coming in?
We have not asked directly, but I will say that this is an annual request from the Education Association. Uh, and it is something that we re- we frequently get back in climate surveys. We frequently get back in just general ask surveys. And it is something that when I first came to Stafford, uh was part of the unconference I did with staff as being something that was important to them. And granted, that's really just a focus group, but it's a pretty representative focus group. My staff advisory also reports this as being an issue on a pretty regular basis. They are getting questions and comments from their buildings and it surfaces every year, so.
I could get some community support or something one time.
But if you put again, it's gotta be ongoing because it's.
Well, no, well, it's only six hundred thousand to start it, right?
It it would be about six hundred and some change to start it.
Then we need another person to manage it.
Oh, okay, and then.
It's gonna be.
And then it's ongoing, but.
No, but six hundred thousand.
Six hundred thousand a year.
Six hundred thousand doesn't include the.
It's six hundred thousand built into your base budget, once it's there, unless you cut it.
Oh, I mean, every year it's gonna cost six hundred thousand?
Because it's totally personnel, it's not to do it.
That's everywhere.
It's your hiring people to do the job.
I thought it costs more to start, so what's the startup cost?
That is the startup cost and the ongoing costs. Yeah, because you you're you're paying for personnel to do additional work. That is what the cost is. And good news, we've whittled that down as much as we can. But it's not a, it's not a flip of a switch, it's not like.
So it's no extra money to start it then? That that's interesting. I would have thought there would be a startup cost. To get it started, you have to do some things that you wouldn't have to do when you're just maintaining them.
Well, we already have the system in place. So so from an infrastructure standpoint, it it is just committing the additional man-hours. It is committing the additional resources to making sure that it actually gets done. It's just not, I mean, it's quite literally double the work.
I do think that there's timekeeping software, it's like a startup cost that's in addition personnel, the kind of.
So it's even more than six hundred?
To make it cheaper.
No, in that, in that.
Okay, in, for the first year.
So there might be a slight reduction of ongoing costs, but not significant.
And I don't know if you.
No, it would be probably more subscription-based.
But the majority of the cost is personnel and a little bit for the adult.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
But but there you wouldn't see a reduction at any point in the future, is my point, is that.
Yeah, no.
You know, once it's.
Things usually don't work.
Once it's in, it's, I mean, that's part of your cost structure, that's a part of your basis moving forward.
This is one of the programs that the county did not want to share with us.
Right, well, I mean, we can give direction, we want that to be something and we can lip out something else, right?
Let's put a little earmark on that one.
I just think that, you know, the, we can't pay you enough and we're only gonna pay you once a month is a little disconcerting for many of our employees. And this might be a small thing that we could implement that would make a bigger difference down the road.
In their, in their daily life.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it's just.
What percentage of our budget is six hundred thousand, de minimis?
Well, it's not de minimis, but because we we are less than a percent.
It's more than our lunch debt.
I'm not saying six hundred is de minimis.
That's right.
What percentage is it, less than one percent, right?
Half a percent.
It's only slightly more than the lunch debt last year.
No, not last year, it's the current lunch debt.
Less than, less than half percent.
It's like five hundred. Minimal. I forget what the most recent one was. Does anyone have any additional questions?
But to the point though is that, you know, you do, if you're gonna add something to the budget.
Right, I'm just looking to see if there's.
You should be thinking about the offset and there's.
Will that extra money that you are optimistic that's coming in, could that be used for any of these things?
Absolutely. Um, and I'd highly recommend that you revisit that when you have the offsetting revenue.
So we know where to go, yeah.
Um, my, I'm gonna be the W downer. We are calculating in about fifteen and a half million from the county administrator's recommendation.
Fifteen, fifteen flat.
Is it fifteen flat or is it fifteen?
Fifteen flat.
I thought it was fifteen and a point.
Nope.
Oh, well. So last year, the county administrator had a recommendation. And we, the budget that was initially passed was not that. And so what is our plan if there's another unfavorable budget to make things up?
Well, so this is the uh, this is the the radical negative side of this is that your discretionary expense is compensation. So to balance your budget, it will eat into compensation. Because you're not gonna not pay your utility bill. You're not gonna have thirty-five in a classroom. You know, you're 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 gonna pay your nondiscretionary expenses. You're gonna transport the children to school. So you're, you are looking at comp. And whatever you have available for comp, you'll be reducing any kind of phased program back down to a percentage. So you'd be taking a step backwards.
His recommendation is fifteen, but and our compensation is like thirteen point six, right? So we can have like one point four million of our ask that.
We'd still be short, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. If if it was zero, but if it.
Right, right, right. I get that. I'm just saying like comparatively speaking, in our budget, thirteen point six million is what we're.
To get us to this point, but you also have some nondiscretionary expense that's not fully covered by state revenue at this time, so.
Right.
Yeah.
So I'm just trying to figure out like if we lost.
Oh, there's that, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So worst-case scenario, um, the state makes no modifications to its revenue picture and just defers everything to the second year of the biennial, stranger things have happened.
Unlikely.
Unlikely, but stranger things have happened. And you get the twenty-three million that you're expecting from the state and a flat zero from the county government in terms of change revenue. What does that look like? Well, you're probably going to have to reduce the amount of additional bus drivers that you have. Not get rid of bus drivers, but reduce the additional amount of bus drivers that you have. So you are, you are looking at changing our transportation services. You may have to go back and revisit staffing standards and make an actual cut to your staffing. That is one solution. But in all of those scenarios, you would be offering zero dollars for compensation to all staff.
That's.
Pretty severe. So the worst-case scenario looks like no raise of any kind whatsoever for staff in a in a year where we're still experiencing some inflationary effects.
Well, it goes, your percentages of people leaving skyrocket.
And because.
Yeah. Definitely.
I was just gonna say, and then we're, then we're absent.
It would negatively impact the trajectory.
Well, that's what I really just wanted to put out there is like what, you know.
When was the last time the county board of supervisors gave us nothing additional?
Well, I'm sure they'll give us something, but.
Okay, then.
But still, when I'm looking at the numbers and they're fairly mean and we have to think about, you know, a seventy-five percent reduction, which was the recommendation on the first budget passed, would have given us about four million to put towards raises. That when I looked back at the minutes and looked at what the numbers were on their intended budget that they voted on and passed for this school system, it is pretty terrifying when you look at it against what we're trying to do. And this is even fairly.
And and next year's even uglier because that's eighty-one million dollars next year, eighty-one points up, it's almost two million, eighty-two million. When we get the information about what we have gotten, what the increase has been over the last six years, because I believe you, Dr. Chase requested that, could you also give us what the county supervisor, county manager had recommended so we can compare where those two numbers fall?
Well, I I'd also like to look at the state. I mean, I'm, I can't look at one set of numbers if I just look at what the county.
I I asked for the total and so you subtracted the.
Yeah, because, because really, it fits together like a puzzle. We get money from the state, we get money from local. I'm not counting the federal because that's such a small percentage.
It's one or two percent of the budget.
But you know, I don't feel that I can just look at one without looking at the other.
Sure, but I I think you have to keep in mind that state money tends to be equally distributed across all the counties. And so if we're trying to get ahead, what we get at the local level is pretty much the only way we compete, right?
Correct.
But it's gonna, but it will show us annually, you know, is the state going up, you know, where, where we are, so.
Sure, absolutely. Sure.
So I, I would like to see.
And you've got a pretty good glimpse of that. The chart that gives you a good glimpse of that is actually this one inside your handout. We've shown this graph a bunch. It shows how we're growing each year. The red line is representative of the percentage of our budget that comes from county coffers. So the red line is going down, so thirty-eight percent of our budget comes from county coffers. It used to be forty-five percent. So where, whereas nearly half of our revenue came from the county, now it is closer to a third. It's not quite a third, thank goodness, but that's a pretty, that's a pretty striking decline.
Yeah, it is.
And, and, you know, I, I have, I do not disagree with the county at all when they say that the state is not carrying the water. They're not, there's a lot of room for improvement, but the, instead of arguing how the state pie is cut up, they really need to be looking at increasing the size of the pie because how the state pie is cut up, like it or not, is actually pretty equitable. It's very formulaic, it's based on a system, granted, the system should probably change, but it's based on a system that is very predictable, very reliable and is equitably distributed. And we are actually one of the beneficiaries. We, we are on the right end of the local composite index to receive more state revenue than, than other localities. But as a, as a consequence of that, our locality should be closing a lot of the gap and proportionally, they have not been doing that. And so there's a lot of catch-up that they have to do, really over a decade's worth of catch-up to, to close that gap and.
I just can't, I can't read this. I'm, I'm just, I, I need to bring a magnifying glass. But this per pupil expenditure ranking, can we have our per pupil expenditure for those same years that we're looking at what we got from the state, what we got from the local and what was our per pupil expenditure? Because to me, that's going to be significant. If our per pupil expenditure is going down proportionately, that tells a story.
And it is.
Okay, well, but, but if we have it, that we can show it and, and something a little bigger than.
Yeah. Yeah, and so we do.
I, I just can't, I can't.
But your per pupil expenditure is kind of, you know, runs two or three years behind, is that right? Like you don't get per pupil expenditure for this, this current year.
But we should be able to do it. We know how much money we have.
It is. Yeah, it is a year behind.
There's a.
Was there four million, but.
It, it is a year behind in terms of our ranking with the state.
Okay, so in that chart, the number of students in that year, that would be helpful too.
Right. Sure, and I just want to put out there that the, the county side's argument to that is that debt service is not calculated into per pupil expenditure and.
Anywhere.
Right, but they carry more of our debt service. It's not part of our budget, like in Spotsy, it's part of, they take care of their own debt service.
We used to and then they, they chose to take it out.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just adding context that we know will hear back if we start talking about per pupil expenditure.
Well, I, I just.
We're aware, we know.
It's just to have a sense of the trends and what it all.
Yes, exactly.
Mm-hmm.
I, I just want to know their question if we have shut our doors because we don't have any teachers.
If there's anything else, I think would be helpful to understand as that is.
We're not required to shut our, we, we don't.
We, it's not, we don't legally, you're going to be teaching classes, so fuck off.
I, I know, but one thing is that.
It'll be one hundred percent virtual learning. Do we move on to?
I'll be your volunteer teacher.
Yeah, the, the, the good news, bad news is, is that, that, you know, my recommendation is that this is a work in progress and that you, the board do the best you can to adopt the best budget you can at the time that you, you have, knowing that you're going to come back and revisit it and, and address things when your revenue picture changes positively or negatively. But, but that you, you're, you're going to have a living document to a certain degree. I, I think you also need to probably start shifting to having a discussion about how you want to present this information to the supervisors and what you all want to convey to the supervisors and how you want staff to prepare to, to, to convince, uh, to convey this to the supervisors and what responsibilities you want each board member to have. And if you have any additional correction for me.
Or even what you think works.
This is the twenty-seventh, right?
Yeah, what do you think works? What do you think doesn't work? When, when is that, when do we approve the budget?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Oh, my goodness. Are you ready?
Well, I think we'll hear from people tonight.
Right.
We're on session beforehand.
I think this is a really conservative budget. I mean, there's, it's based on what we anticipate that we're going to get.
Today.
Today. And, and that may change, but we have to have a starting point. I think we've been very conservative about it, but certainly.
Oh, thank you. We still have to, we have to assume that what we're approving is, is all we're going to have.
Yeah.
And I agree, realistically, you'll probably get it, but, and we could say if we get it, this is where it's going to go.
Sure.
But I still want, I still circle back to the license versus the, the non-license. And, and I'm, I'm not suggesting this, but I'm looking, you have a deferral of what, two point seven million? Um, if you deferred the difference.
That's for the teachers, the license scale.
Of getting the, getting the license on phase one, would you save the three percent? Because you're proposing three percent across the board for license. If you put the license, I'm sorry, the non-license, if you put the non-license, if they were to go to phase one, would it, it would be less than the cost of phase one? Would it be the cost of phase one less the three percent?
No, it'd be, it would be in addition to that, it would cost an additional three point eight million dollars.
So would they get, they would get on phase one plus get three percent?
No, the three percent would be a part of that. What we are doing is guaranteeing a three percent as.
In the current budget.
Right.
What we're currently shooting. Everybody will get three percent.
But, but, but keep in mind that this is part of the.
Except starting teachers.
Yeah. Yeah, except that this is.
Except starting teachers.
This is part of the challenge though, because your service scale, it doesn't exist, it's all over the place. So a lot of this is placing people on a scale for the first time, based on their years of experience. And they may realize very significant jumps and then some may realize just a three percent jump. So.
What's your good news, Chris?
You, you have a, you have a wide variety of, of people just by creating a system for them to be on because their previous system was this was the salary that you were hired at and we've been adding flat percentages regardless of the years of experience that you've been on. And so you very realistically could have people doing the same job with wildly different years of experience, making the same amount of money.
No, I know, it's, it's so expensive.
So to correct that is what phase one does. Now, no one would, starts to do.
Starts to do.
Starts to do.
And it's a pretty significant adjustment.
Yeah.
And it, and it will be the most expensive phase you do for your service employees is the first phase
It's, it's council for those years of experience.
because you're properly placing them where they should be based on their years of successful experience.
No, I'm just, it's like three point eight million.
It's actually seven million dollars total.
Right.
To do phase one.
To do phase one and three percent of that, you're taking out, if, if you just do three percent of that, of that effort, you're saving three point eight million dollars. So to close the gap, it is effectively, you know, three, three point eight million dollars more. So it costs three point two million dollars to do three percent.
And three point eight to do the full.
To do the full phase.
So the difference between phase one for non-licensed and if we wanted to do phase one, we would have to come up with another three point eight.
Three point eight million, yes.
Three point eight.
Where would you get it? That's the question.
Well, I, there's only one place it could come from and that's from.
And that's from the license scale.
Right, I mean.
Right, right.
And so the trade-off there.
Nobody wants to take away.
That you may lose licensed teachers in classrooms where we already have long-term subs and other things that are necessarily licensed.
No, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm saying this, we need to have this discussion.
We have bad choices and worse choices.
My, this is like, do you feed your first child or your second one or?
First.
Right.
At all.
Or does, right, or, and who do you offer your third child to?
Seven, I'm sorry, it's your turn to eat today. Tomorrow you get to.
Right.
I only have one, so I don't have to distinguish.
Well, yeah, well. It's my dog, so I don't have to distinguish.
And long-term, think these should be connected so that there is no, this group of employees versus that group of employees.
I don't, I don't. More of this.
No, no, and I, I get it, and I'm just, I'm struggling with this.
It's frustrating.
Because we have not done one.
Level.
Level for the non-licensed, not even phase one.
So wait a minute though, I do want to correct that because this is frustrating to me because we have done that. We have fought for that and we have said, but we have had to accommodate with deferments. So it is not this school board not advocating and pushing for our service professionals. We are one hundred percent behind that. We just can't pull this money out of the hat, so.
I'm not saying we're not asking for it, but I'm saying we haven't given it.
Right, right, but, but that's not because we haven't wanted to give it and that's, that's the issue for me that we're looking at here.
We haven't given. Which. Yes.
There isn't a single person sitting on this board that doesn't want to go five hundred and sixty million.
All right, so if we. If we, do we want to talk about our presentation?
So I will say that it speaks volumes that you had service professionals that didn't come to this meeting.
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
They went to the board of supervisors tonight.
Good.
Because they know that the school board supports their request.
Yes.
Yes.
So.
But then the board of supervisors fund the conversation.
What do you think we should focus on as a board when we, when this budget is presented? And who's presenting it and how are we doing this?
That, that's, that's really for your consideration. I will say this, that, that I think it's, it's effective.
What?
Yeah, I think it's effective for you to communicate your goals.
No, no, I'm saying delegate.
Oh, you're delegating.
I, I think it's effective for you to communicate your goals and your goals are pretty well stated. I think it's effective for you to communicate your top priorities in terms of people, growth, your assets and, and compensation, and I think you've got some charts that we've created that you can leverage and decide how you want to use them. But your goals are really compelling because they resonate with your constituents a tremendous amount. Your workforce is definitely behind you in your advocacy for compensation and for additional support in staffing. And I think that you have done a great job of convincing.
The number one place to work in Stafford County, by the way.
Yeah, it is, it is great, but I think, I think you've done a great job of convincing the supervisors that they need to take care of their schools and they, that, that that's just an area. So I don't know that you need to re-convince them of that, other than reminding them that that's still a priority. But talking to them about where we stand in the competitive marketplace is a real challenge and that's, that's probably, that's the story is, is compensation.
They don't like any comparisons to.
So last year, Dr. Taylor presented our budget as, or we think.
Actually, the board did last year. I did it two years ago, so it's your call on how you want to do it.
We did that last year?
We did at Brookpoint.
Yeah.
And we each talked.
No, that was CIP at Brookpoint.
That was CIP.
That was CIP.
We did our budget presentation. We've done it all different ways. I mean, we've had, you know, traditionally the chair would do it, but then we've had some times where we've had like a budget expert on the board, which I don't think we have it right now.
Fatsy has done it before.
But, but they, you know, they've done it, you know, yeah, it's, it's, it really just depends on what the board wants to do. Sarah did it.
I've done it twice, so nose goes.
Yeah, it's no fun doing it.
It's a lot of work.
Right, especially if you're standing there in front of the board.
Well, but part of it is telling the story, like it's, it's, it's not just compensation. These are people who live in our community and work in our community and teach our kids. So, you know, what, seventy-three percent?
But that, that to me is not the rationale for increasing the budget.
No, but it's an important thing.
It's the job that we are tasked with doing. It's educating the students. And how can we educate the students if we don't have the, this is just me, but it's the resources that we require to successfully educate them, which is attracting those highly qualified people, retaining them. In a, in a, in a student population, that wasn't what it was just a few years ago. It's just totally different now. The requirements, the challenges, behaviors, the needs.
Well, maybe one of the things we should do is start with the people and tell the story of the people who work in the schools and do the jobs and then talk about the priorities.
Or we could start with our students and say, this is our, this is our base. Makeup. You know, this is who we're serving. We don't work for the supervisors. We really don't even, we don't work for the parents. Our job is for the students.
Well, that's all part of the people, so start with the people.
Yeah, start with them, start with the kids and, I mean, to, to me, the one big learning thing is, you know, when we sat with the PTOs and PTAs was to, I mean, I know that there's language challenges in all the schools, but the significant number at Moncur was a surprise to me.
That was not an accurate number though.
Was not?
No, she said it was like eighty percent or something. It's not that high. It's not that high.
Yeah. But even so.
It's one of our highest percentages, but not that high.
But I got them, they actually. Arranged, there was.
Yeah, let's make sure whatever we present is accurate.
Add it, please.
I just wonder if it would be, it would be beneficial. I don't know if this is something we can do or if we have the time to do it, but you're talking about starting with the people and it's one thing to look at it in the charts and graphs and that's amazing, but it might be another thing to have a video of some of the students talking about or teachers talking about stuff, just to open up sort of an introduktional, just a way for people to really experience and I wouldn't put you guys on the spot for it either, but just a way for people to, you know, I can look at these all day and they, they mean a little bit of something to me, but when I'm listening or seeing who's actually experiencing this and outcome.
Decision, yeah.
That's a little bit different, so I, I just offer that out there maybe as a way to kind of help present some of this. It's a little bit easier than asking like a kid to come to the, or supervisors meeting and provide public comment or whatever.
Right, no, that's a good idea.
And I thought about like doing something that kind of highlights, you know, our achievements over the past.
Who, the who, what our kids have achieved.
Like we've got the assistant principal of the year, we've got the championship this team, we've got the championship that team. We've got, you know, all of these students who are serving our armed forces. We've got, you know, this many people supporting our workforce. Just all the things we have put into our community and now we're asking our community to put back into us.
Yeah, I think they need a tangible, a face to what, to me, I feel like we don't, we don't put a face to these dollars. So it just looks like we want, like I'm putting this in my own personal bank account, right? I think it's time to put a face to the money and let them understand why we're advocating so hard for this stuff, not for our co-offers here. I mean, this isn't coming to a central bank location for us, so, so it might just be us talking heads, but it's a little bit different to see the community and the residents talking about it.
So one of the things. One thing I liked when we were at our town hall and, I mean, we all had it, but that I particularly noticed was when Dr. Taylor was talking about a first-year teacher, no more seasoned teacher, knew them by name, knew them by what their weakness, strength were, kind of thing. To even, you know, to, that's, that's who we have, you know, we have this many first-year teachers. We have twelve percent of our teachers that are, you know, working in a classroom, trying to get their license.
Ms. Tully and Ms. Shaw.
Yeah. See?
Put them on a video.
But I mean, it does speak to the culture. Education is a people-intensive endeavor.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, it's, it's parents, it's students, it's teachers, it's all people-intensive and that's one of the reasons it's so expensive.
Just don't tell us that it was my idea. I was gonna say.
You know, the, the work-based learning thing that you have.
This is really good at this now, so.
Really when? It's on the twenty-seventh.
Where's it mount?
It's a joint workshop.
It's, no, Ebenezer.
To present to them directly.
When we do that, that is the most amazing video.
Which one?
You were there, Mari, that I think it was the work-based learning where they had the students and the teachers and then they were in the workforce. But it was like what you're talking about, you can see, you know, that, that was, that was really pretty cool.
How, how long?
Two weeks.
Two hours.
Oh, no, I thought you were, between now and then.
I'm not sitting there for two weeks. I don't care what anybody says, no way. That's already what two hours feels like.
But I think if we could put together a video of our, our students' accomplishments, our students' successes, our, our, our students that have, you know, have, have dedicated, have committed to either college or the military or, or, you know, what are our successes? What do they look like?
But, well, it's important to focus on the impact that the life of funding has on us as well.
But, because the flip side of that is if we're succeeding, then, you're doing fine.
You're doing great.
But we're, our challenges, we have to put our challenges and then.
Well, I think. Yeah, I guess, then. We need to make a highlight on.
We should start out with our challenges and then how we're meeting them. And then the future is, we can only continue to meet them if we can adequately compensate people.
We should get everybody a box of brandings in a can, you know, and just be like.
But I think it's successes and then say, but if we want to keep doing this, we have to meet these challenges.
Well, I mean, we can show our math scores.
Yeah, and our writing scores.
Yeah. All of the scores, I mean. All of the scores, I mean.
Well, I also think it's important for the for the teachers to really feel like they've been heard and I think having them actually be able to do a video to talk about what's the reason why they stay here. But what's really go, what, you know, we all know what our real motivation is, it's food on our family's table, so I can be happy as a clam here in Stafford County
Because.
and that doesn't feed my kids, so.
Is it, this might be hard to do, but would it be possible to almost have a digital public comment just for budget that we then give directly to them?
As a second.
That a student could write in, uh, you know, what you love about Stafford schools or what you, you know, what's your thing that you, so the the start, stop, and continue, something like that, where we can collect that feedback from anybody, you know, whether it could be an employer on what they're, you know, grateful for and what they wish they could do. If I could give you one thing or.
I would say.
And maybe it's different for kids or something.
And maybe restrict the amount of words, so that it's not the three minutes, but maybe more like, you know.
I would say that the video.
Yeah, like half, like a sentence.
Yeah, a couple sentences, two to three sentences.
And I wonder if we do have video that we can start with from other activities and stuff that we've done that hasn't been aired before.
Yeah, but I'm determined and the.
It's good to show them what we do.
Yeah.
Which is a lot.
What is it? I'm determined and chart chart the future or those events.
Well, and how important those, how important those things are from a funding perspective as well.
Decision day.
Decision day, yeah.
They need to actually actively go out and give to our kids through these things, which are not directly tied to the school system per se, right?
What is what the program is.
They are, but they're things that we're doing outside the school system and people aren't just offering us free buildings and.
But we then we then we go around and say, we're able to do this because we have been supported by the community.
And, you know.
But because of these new challenges, these in, not new, but increasing challenges, we 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 need more support.
Right.
Newest population.
Because we haven't adapted to the growth.
And this is why, this is what we're asking for.
And I do think we need to focus on how many teach, how many employees, not just teachers, are leaving. Um.
Yes, I agree.
Um, particularly ones that aren't, not just the ones that are not returning, but I feel like we're losing a lot like during the year.
Yeah, like triple.
Um.
We have a lot of transfers, though, because we're such a high military community. There's a lot of times.
Compared to other years.
Can we go to the bathroom?
I was gonna say, are we ready to recess?
Yeah.
We have another work session next week.
Do you wanna set us an outline?
Sure.
And we'll start with the video and then then prioritize that.
That'd be that call.
Yeah.
We can do that.
Let's make sure we get that thank you into your supporting.
I can't even say it.
I know.
How come you don't say it?
I don't know, I just don't like it.
I like the.
Ms. Hall, if you could do the roll.
Uh, Ms. Dr. Chase?
Here.
Ms. Dukow is absent, Ms. Nadya is absent. Ms. Halsted?
It's good.
Here. Uh, Ms. Healy?
Here.
Ms. O'Donnell?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Ms. Sigmund?
Here.
And Dr. Warner?
Here.
I'm sure you have a quorum.
Okay, we do not have anyone participating electronically this evening. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Do you want to push our clickers?
We'll use clickers.
Push our clickers.
Cast your votes.
This'll be a good to see if they work. And passes sixty-zero, Sky is out. Okay. Uh, we will move to our presentations. We are going to hear a report and recommendation from our Citizens Budget Advisory Committee. Thank you very much, Dr. Marsh.
Thank you all very much, and just to move slides up.
You can use the mouse, go up and down.
Okay, cool. All right, perfect. All right, good evening, everybody. My name is Abram Marsh. I am a retired Air Force officer. I am the husband of a school counselor and the father of two Stafford school students. My family moved here to Stafford in twenty-twenty and we have greatly enjoyed our community as well as all that Stafford has offered us. However, about a year after we got here, I went to one of Dr. Taylor's town halls. Uh, was shortly after he became superintendent and we learned a disturbing fact. The disturbing fact was that our school district is severely underfunded. And since then, I've lent my talents to try and help in various ways. And when the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee was stood up, I was fortunate to be selected. Thank you, Ms. Halsted. And I've been its chair since we were founded or, you know, reinstated last year. So, this is what we're gonna cover today. Our briefing is organized to deal with three topics that the bylaw suggests our committee convey our findings to you. This is scope of work, community perspectives, and recommendations. Moreover, this briefing is presented to you, but it's also presented to our community, our parents, our administrators, community members, as well as our teachers. So, let me start by introducing our committee. For those committee members in attendance, would you please stand, please? Now, our committee is comprised of a diverse group of Stafford residents. We come from different walks of life, political perspectives, as well as regions of the nation. We are parents of children of Stafford schools, as well as many of us are military veterans and civil servants. We also have our fair share of educators and community leaders. However, all of us are committed to ensuring that Stafford's public schools are well-resourced so that our children may enjoy a first-rate education that enables them to thrive and succeed in the world of tomorrow. Now, as we uh took on this role as committee members, we took it on with a very serious sense of service to our community. Our approach is to help make simple for ourselves and others what the priorities are. However, we, because this is a school uh environment, we wanted to do it and simplify that with the ABCs. What are the ABCs? First, scope of work lays the foundation for A, advocating for full funding. Providing community perspectives requires B, breaking down barriers. And our recommendations help C, communicating the need for change. So let's begin with our scope of work, in which you'll learn how our committee coalesced for advocating for full funding of our schools. Here, you'll see that our busy little community or committee has been active since founding in Sept- February of last year. We've held over twelve meetings and we've received briefings from thirteen different Stafford school leaders to learn about various topics. Furthermore, we've held three of those meetings in some of the most challenging to maintain schools in the county. Finally, when we weren't meeting with each other, we met with at least half of Stafford County's principals to get their ideas on what challenges they're facing in their respective schools. Next, let's look at some community perspectives. But to do so, we had to talk to those administrators and parents, but we can't do that without data. Because with that data and those perspectives, that's when you can break down the barriers to help unders- others understand the urgency behind funding the entirety of the superintendent's funding request. And when we say entirety, me, we we mean everything to include everything on the back sheet that's colored in red. So, what happens when you don't? As you can see from the data presented on this slide, Stafford County is a high-capacity but low-effort district. Now, what do we mean by that? We mean that although the administrators, the teachers, the staff make Herculean efforts every day to ensure that our kids have a solid education, they're inadequately resourced to do anything more, period. So, our point is that the school district's revenue from the Board of Supervisors shouldn't be lower than our neighboring counties if we want to achieve positive growth and results for our students. In addition, with over fifty percent of Stafford residents connected to our schools, and many of them with green shirts here in the audience, we collectively have to find a way to prime them to act about Stafford's disinvestments in our local education, and that needs to change now. Now, for some perspectives, although we in this entire room are fully aware of the of the benefits of investing in our schools, the ill effects of continuing funding shortfalls bodes ill for our teachers, our students, and let's be frank, our entire Stafford community, to include our future. And when we say future, we're tying that to the Board of Supervisors twenty forty vision because it is not aligned with our Stafford County strategic, schools' strategic plan. And so, as a result of that, we run the risk of repelling a highly skilled workforce, today's students, that's what they're gonna turn into, world-class businesses because they won't have the infrastructure, and then a potential mass exodus of our current residents due to poor schools. So let's get to the meat of it, our recommendations, because this is how we communicate the need for change. First, we must fully fund career and technical programs partnered with local business and universities to improve the educational employment opportunities of all our workforce to fill those workforce development gaps. We must fully fund career, I mean, the additional sixty-two point nine million dollars in FY twenty-five unfunded needs to improve our student outcomes. That means everything from special education to gifted education to college and career readiness. Next, we must fully fund the physical infrastructure and wellness programs to ensure physical and psychological safety of our students and staff. And lastly, we must fully fund the competitive compensation of teachers and support staff to attract and retain talented workforce. Now, our board, our committee uh put all of these recommendations onto a slick sheet and that, I believe, was printed and will be on the desk. In addition to that, we took our ABCs and we did put this entire, all of the main points of this briefing on that. And that's also on the desk outside. So, this concludes my briefing to you. However, before I turn the floor back over, I would like to emphasize the need for all of us to act as that pact, parents, administrators, community members, and teachers, to exercise the ABCs of funding our schools. However, I would also be remiss in addressing the elected leaders of our community to break that down as how we would like that for you. So, A, advocate for fully resourcing the superintendent's entire budget, including the unfunded requests, as you engage with Stafford residents to discuss the school division's successes and challenges. B, this is something only you can do. Break down barriers of communication by collaborating with our Board of Supervisors. As our two elected bodies, there cannot be any animosity between the two. It is unproductive and will not achieve our collective mutual goal of providing the first-rate education that our children deserve and enables them to be the leaders of Stafford for tomorrow. And lastly, we need to see, communicate the need for residents and local businesses to change their hearts towards increasing school funding by raising awareness of the benefits of investing in our schools, and that means utilizing something that you have that we don't, leveraging the political and community relationships that helped you get elected. With that, that is my briefing, and I thank you for this opportunity to chat with you today.
Thank you very much, all of you. Do we have any questions for Dr. Marsh, your committee? Ms. Randall?
So, one of the things that you have on for the communicate, um, engaging with the Stafford residents. So, we've done the collective town halls for our CIP. We've done the collective town halls for our budget. Of course, we have open meetings for public comment. What other ways would you, and other board members have done their own um town halls and in small communities as well as larger for their district. What are some other ways that you would suggest?
I am glad that you asked that.
Oh, good. It's like we planned it.
Because I came from Prince William County, as I told everybody here, all right? Prince William didn't get the money that it got, that it gets just because it's bigger. It doesn't get it because it's smarter, because we're the same people. It gets it because it collaborates collectively at each level. So, the answer that I would offer is we have to work together. Meaning, you use it, utilizing the communication resources of the school board to then target those areas within the community. You know who are, for instance, the major uh HOAs, for instance, in the community. Those that have people that come out. For instance, when I was in Stafford County, I was the president of one of those HOAs. My email box would get an email saying something was going on, we're changing the name of a school in your area. Now, that wasn't to tell me to go and change it to the Susan Randall School. It was to bring my community members to that meeting to give our ideas on what the school's name should be. And I think that if we can work more targeted in how we communicate with residents and again, as elected leaders, the political side of that, you have groups of 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 interest groups that cross the aisle. If we can do that, we can get the the funding that the schools need.
You're welcome.
Dr. Warner?
First of all, I would like to thank you, Dr. Marsh. I think you did an excellent job with uh chairing the budget committee for the first time, and I think that the committee itself, it's some of the smartest people I've worked with on it, and I just appreciate how much they brought to the committee. Um, I think your recommendations are excellent. I think you're you're spot on, and I think I just wanna thank you for the hard work you guys did.
Thank you, ma'am.
So, I also wanna thank you for all the hard work. I know this must feel untenable at most, at some points because there is such a variability in, you know, how we get to this and working together is, we talk about competing priorities, but ultimately our one priority should be the same, and that's the kids of Stafford County and how we bring them up to become more productive and, yes, tax-paying citizens later on, hopefully keeping them here. So, I I love this and I just wanna thank you for all the effort, 'cause I love the whole ABC, because you're right, this is not simple, but this is the simplicity of what we should actually be doing in our community. And and to support our kids and their growth, because this is about them ultimately. Um, I don't necessarily have any questions, but um, well, actually, I do have one question. Moving forward into the budget season as we go here, have you found any interest in groups of folks going over to speak to the supervisors together?
Oh, lots of people. But that, and that's the whole point is is is. Lots of people, but that, and that's the whole point, is, is targeting those groups. One thing that I think was effective, for instance, my, I'm, I'm the son of a nearly 40-year police officer in the city of Miami Police Department. Police departments don't get money just because they wear shiny uniforms and, you know, drive around in cars and wear guns. They get it because of their advocacy. You know, so I learned very early how the Fraternal Order of Police, you know, worked at the ground level to ensure that their, that the, the cops in Miami and elsewhere got paid, the, the pay that they deserve. I've seen that work here. You know, when our firemen were wearing their yellow shirts on the day that, that the budget was being signed off on, that sent a big signal to our Board of Supervisor members. We didn't have the same thing on our side. We don't have that same continued push. And so, my ask is that we continue to work together and we make it evident. If 50% of our community are not police officers and firemen, they're teachers, they're students, they're graduates, they're bus drivers, they're parents. I can assure you, if the message is simplified and we touch those key points, you will have an outpouring of support for that.
Well said. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions or anything to add? Thank you very, very much. That was a great note to end on, in my opinion. We will move forward to the public hearing portion of our meeting tonight. This is a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2025 budget. Three minutes are allotted to each speaker or group. Speakers are encouraged to provide a copy of your comments to the board clerk. Speakers shall identify themselves by name. Citizen comments which are profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent fiscal harm shall be ruled out of order. Also, if you're here to speak on anything other than the budget, there is a sign-up sheet down in front so that you can come and speak to at our regular business meeting next week. Tonight's meeting is limited to the budget. Ms. Hall?
Yes, ma'am, Chair. We have six citizens who have signed up. The first three are Lisa Crittenden, Sherry Quaresma, and Molly Denham.
Good evening. I'm Molly Denham from the Hartwood District. As we ramp up the budget cycle and following the tumultuous joint session we had last month, I urge each of you to make a concerted effort to reach out to your supervisor counterpart and start mending fences. I would even venture to say that it may take you reaching out to all the members across the street to repair some of the damage. In my opinion, the actions taken by this board with regard to Elementary 19 have not only eroded public trust, but have severely fractured what was already often a rocky relationship with the Board of Supervisors. Last month's joint session should have been a very large billboard-sized neon sign that said, "What the heck are you doing?" The Board of Supervisors did come at you with real concerns from the public, and some of those concerns, especially the ones about race, should not be scoffed off or dismissed. They weren't pulled from a hat or thrown out as public cannon fodder. They stem from very real and very angry sentiments from the public. I've never held back from you guys before, and I don't intend to do so now. There were some poor decisions made, in my opinion, but I hope that you see this as a target of opportunity to double down on efforts to inform the public and provide information that directly affects them and their children. I hope you see this as a target of opportunity to work harder on the relationship with the Board of Supervisors. You don't have the ability to work in a vacuum, and you have to rely on your relationship with the Board of Supervisors, and you have to work to gain back some of their trust if you accept, expect a successful budget season this year. I thank you for the budget town halls. The information that Dr. Taylor provides is always very informative and helps us as advocates for the school when we talk with our elected officials across the street. I'm sorry I wasn't able to attend my district meeting due to schedule conflicts, but thank Aquia and Griffiths-Widewater for allowing me to attend theirs. I would just reiterate once more that I believe the onus is really going to have to be on you guys to reach out and repair any damage felt by the public and the Board of Supervisors. Your decisions led to this point, and it's your responsibility to repair any collateral damage. And with that, I wish the school's a very successful budget cycle, and we'll continue to advocate for what is in the best interest of our community schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Sherry Quaresma. I've lived in Stafford for 11 and a half years, and about two months after that, I started working at Shirley Heim where I still work to this day. And thank you for letting me speak to you tonight. I'm here on behalf of the support staff of the district. We couldn't get near as many as we would like to. Some of them have to work second jobs because they're single parents and they just don't make enough. We are hearing good things about the possibility of support staff being moved into Phase 1 in the next budget, and we sincerely hope that that is the case. I wanted to give you a window, and I did send you guys, I think most of you or all of you, an email already, but just to give it to you in person, a window into the finances of a support staff member, myself, with 11 and a half years in Stafford schools and 15 years of experience on the books. In the event that Phase 1 doesn't happen and we get a 3% raise, as is talked about, 3% for someone like me means $75.29 a month more. After taxes, it would be about $56.46, or one tank of gas per month, with 11 and a half years working for Stafford. A 3% raise would help me get one more tank of gas per month, and that is just not enough for someone who's worked for this district, lives in the district. My kids went to Widewater and Shirley Heim Middle School and Brookpoint graduate, and I still have a junior at Brookpoint. I want to work for Stafford schools. I want to retire at Stafford schools and have this be the last job that I have. I work very close to Stafford schools. I love my coworkers, and I really love working in the school atmosphere. Why is it that if I worked at Grand Park Middle School, just 12 minutes from Shirley Heim, I would make $4,000 to $8,000 more a year? And until tonight, I was, I didn't realize until the wonderful PowerPoint. It was like just a question, "Do they make more? I mean, do they just have that much more money?" And now I see and know that we're sixth and they're seventh, so we have more money. But, you know, I guess it's the Board of Supervisors and all these things that I don't understand, but it, it just makes no more sense, no sense that I can work 12 minutes away and make so much more, and I don't want to leave. As Dr. Taylor quoted in his recent slide presentation, "If you find yourself in a hole, stop digging." So, please, this budget cycle, stop digging. Picture the service personnel in our green shirts down in the hole, reaching out for a hand. We need your help now more than ever with the current inflation problem. Please institute Phase 1 for the next budget cycle. Thank you very much.
The next speakers will be Tori Nichols, Michelle Wickman, and Bill Anderson.
Hello. Thank you for my time. I'm Tori Nichols. I am an ESOL teacher at Rock Hill Elementary School. When you guys say "elevate Stafford," I am 100% invested. I have four children at elementary, middle, and high school. My husband and I both work, and we live here in Stafford. Okay, so I'm an ESOL teacher. I teach English to speakers of other languages, so bear with me for about 10 seconds. We're going to have a language lesson. Listen and then see if you can answer the question. Let's try that again. So, can you answer the question? Probably not, right? That was Japanese. That's how my students, the majority of my students feel every day. That was two sentences. Imagine that feeling every day, all day. In Japanese, I asked you, "What did you have for breakfast today? Did you have oatmeal, eggs, or rice and fish? Did you notice a difference the second time that I said it? I slowed down, I used gestures, and I gave you visuals, right? That's just a small sampling of some of the tactics and things that English teachers use every single day, ESOL teachers use every single day. In the last six months, Stafford County has gained over 600 Ls. L stands for English Language Learner. Around 50% of those are the low levels. These babies have little to no English language skills. There's an increasing need for teachers who specialize in teaching the Ls. The classes are so diverse that the classroom teachers are strained. Please help give support to those classroom teachers. If we want to retain our classroom teachers, get them help. ESOL teachers provide services for the Ls, but we also are a coach and a resource for the classroom teachers. We have required weekly minutes by the DOJ, but we can't be in compliance if we're not fully staffed. What we do as an ESOL teacher is so important for our school, our community, and globally. I believe you guys have projected numbers, but those, for, for ESOL teachers for next year, but those are based on the old numbers from about six months ago, back in September. We need an additional 20-plus ESOL teachers on top of what is already projected to reach the growth that we know that we're going to have. Every state in the United States is receiving a record number of immigrants coming in, so please help us help this vulnerable population by fully staffing them. And then, because I have 10 seconds left, at the elementary level, we're hearing whisperings that you guys are going to try and like, change the start time. Please keep elementary early. Please, these babies should not be expected to learn at 4 o'clock in the afternoon. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Taylor, I'm Michelle Wickman. I live in Hampton Oaks. I teach at North Stafford, and I am the Vice President of the Stafford Education Association. We want to thank Dr. Taylor for moving into Phase 3 of the Licensed Salary Scale and proposing significant adjustments to the service staff scales. We also appreciate that the rising cost of healthcare is incorporated into the proposed budget so that burden isn't placed on staff. Continuing to prioritize compensation is really one of the best ways that you're going to keep SCPS employees here in Stafford, so thank you for that. It is particularly important for our service staff, those folks back there. I mean, they're here, they got shirts, they're advocating like mad, and it's because they're a long overdue for a competitive pay raise, and they had to wait an extra year due to the issues that were not yours. That was state funding, but still, they had to wait. So, it's their time. We need to do what's in the proposed budget and more, if you can. When finalizing your funding request, we do ask that you please don't alter those proposed scales unless it's an upward adjustment, just a suggestion. A big concern that we are hearing from staff, though, has to do with the altered student services Level 2 teacher-to-student ratio at the elementary and the middle schools. We know that having that extra paraprofessional means the adult-to-student ratio is still the same, but that change is going to put a significant burden on our already struggling Level 2 student services teachers. They don't have enough hours in the day as it is. Caseloads are already overloaded and unsustainable for Level 2 and Level 1 student services teachers, so this would just add a lot to their plates when we need to be taking things off of their plates. And if we lose people due to changes like this, it won't matter what the staffing standard is because there won't be people to fill those gaps. So, if you can work to find an alternative that would keep the standards where they're at, or better yet, improve them, it would alleviate a lot of stress for our student services teachers. We have encouraged our members to review all of the budget documents and reach out to y'all with their priorities. If you have any questions or you need to touch base with us, you can always reach out to your designated SEA district liaison or a member of the executive board. And we know that building this funding request isn't an easy task by any means, so we thank you for doing the hard work. I know we want to ask for the moon, and we know that realistically, they can't give us the moon, but there's got to be like some stars in the middle there that we can work together. I would echo Ms. Denham's sentiments that I really think it just comes down to working together because ultimately, we all have the same goal of doing what's best for the staff and students of Stafford County. Thank you.
Well, good evening, Dr. Taylor, members of the school board. My name is Bill Anderson. I have the privilege and honor of serving as a pastor to kids and students here in Stafford County. I'd just say, I think my church would love to have this timer right on the pulpit, but that's for another day. First, I want to thank Dr. Taylor for your time and your, your staff's time to putting into this budget. I want to thank the school board members for taking time, although something tells me it wasn't completely voluntary to do your community meetings and to hear feedback about the budget. I want to thank you for taking a stand with our Board of Supervisors. As I've told several of you over the course of the last couple of weeks, the meeting that I witnessed via video a couple of weeks ago was an absolute train wreck, and their one tonight was not much better, so thank you for taking a stand. Nothing I'm going to say tonight is stuff that you do not already know, but I wanted to give you a couple of thoughts here. My theme for these thoughts is "Hold the Line." I say "Hold the Line" because I know how these negotiation processes can work. If we give a little bit, they'll give a little bit, and maybe we can meet in the middle. You have no ground to give. On page 1 of Dr. Taylor's handout, it says, "Your number-one goal is to attract and retain high-quality staff." You cannot do that without the funding to support it. Dr. Taylor, you made a statement at the town hall that I attended that I believe was a very pragmatic statement, although I would say that we need to aim a little bit higher. You said that we need to be closer to Prince William County, although we can never be competitive with Prince William County. Why? We need to push our Board of Supervisors to think outside the box. Imagine what would be possible if we were competitive, if teachers could look at the salaries and say, "I can make just as much here as I can make in Prince William County." This may seem like an unrealistic goal, and perhaps it is, but something to think about because I guarantee, as long as teachers can go elsewhere and make more money in this economy, they are going to do that. Second, provide a safe and welcoming environment. You cannot do that without the funding to support it. I cannot believe some of the things that I'm hearing about our schools. It is absolutely sickening. I know my time is short, so I'll wrap up with this. Hold the line. The schools, our teachers, and our kids have gotten the short end of the stick for a long time. It is time for our Board of Supervisors to tighten their belts and make sacrifices. It is time for our schools, our kids, and our future to take priority. Hold the line, and don't settle for Band-Aids on a hemorrhaging artery. Thank you.
I'm sure that is all.
We've been through our entire list. Is that what you've said?
I beg your pardon?
Have we been through the entire list? Do we want to just double-check that people didn't come late that didn't get us beat?
One person, Lisa Crittenden. Is Lisa here?
Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing and move on to discussion. Would anyone like to start discussion and potential direction regarding our proposed budget?
I mean, I, I mean, we, you know, since we just came out of the work session and we talked about a bunch of this, and I'm not sure how many people got to hear. I mean, I, I just think that with the amount of unknowns related to the budget, per se, right now, right? We are literally at a point where we hear you. We are 1,000% behind all of our support staff, all of our teachers, all of our social workers, all of our admins. And I think that each year that we come to the table asking for money, people seem to think that it's, you know, it's a want-based situation. It's not, I don't think in three years on this board I've ever seen anything that wasn't a needs-based budget. So, I speak pretty regularly to my supervisor counterpart, and we have a pretty decent working relationship together. We actually agree on very many things. I think there's a lot of asks that I've given to him, that I've asked him to kind, and he will, will support them, but that is a group effort, and they need to work together to find ways to pull the money together. We have made the effort to redline as much as we possibly can, which is $62 million worth of redlining. I think that shows a substantial effort on our part to try and not overwhelm the system, but our system is overwhelmed. Our school system is overwhelmed. It's, it's not just financial, it's emotional, it's mental. And it is staggering that this board and the community has to go and beg for their tax dollars to be reimbested back into their community and their schools and their people. So, I don't have much more to say on, on the, the direction. I think we've all kind of absorbed a ton of information tonight, and that will propel us forward. But I, I would be remiss if this board didn't, or I didn't, I can't speak for everybody clearly, just if I could stand up here and give out hugs and make money for hugging our support staff to thank you for hanging in there with us, not that you'd want it, but that's what... Not that you'd want it, but that's what I do, because I don't think that you realize just how much we do know what this is like for you and how much we do appreciate what you do for the school system. I think that is, that is a clear message, that if we leave with the budget hearing tonight with nothing else, that is what I would like to get across, because it's very heartbreaking to see that we have so many people putting everything they have out there, and we're begging for across the street to listen to us and to you, and we are trying to work together. I don't think because we have a fight. I think fighting brings growth, no matter what you do, because you gotta break past the barriers. But I just wanted to say, I think this is a well-thought-out process. Kudos to Dr. Taylor and his team. Thank you so much for, I mean, I've never seen a bunch of lines, Ts crossed and Is dotted like I've seen in the last three years of budget, so that's really all I have to say.
Dr. Warner?
I've been saying that the Service Sector Scale has to be fixed for four years that I've been on the board and am still fighting for the same thing. It's just, we are constantly choosing between bad decisions and worse decisions, because we just don't have the funds. I think it is really important that we get at least Phase One in for our non-licensed scale. I'm just hoping that we can do that, but we don't have the numbers yet. We have tried to create a very conservative budget, and I appreciate the work that Dr. Taylor and his staff have put into that, so that we are, but no, it's not enough. If I could add things to it, it would be Phase One and Two of the Service Sector Scale, so they're caught up to the teachers, Phase Three for the teachers. It would be paying our staff twice a month. It would be investing in the schools and the site-based learning, the site-based funds that we, we distribute. There are so many things that we need, and we are just constantly crossing them off the list and kicking them down the road, and I just, it's, it's extremely frustrating to sit in this chair and to know what this community should be doing and to understand the balance between what we can do and what we're able to do.
Anyone else? Dr. Chase?
Yeah, so just in the interest in, of acknowledging the folks across the street, I did hear today that they approved the modular classrooms for our regular students and also for the early childhood special education, which is not actually required by the state, the head start, and so I'd like to say thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Healy?
Being on this side, I'm left-handed, maybe you can move it over for me, Ms. Hall. Of course, this gets me a little closer to my buddy here. And you ought to see her with dogs. She is amazing. She's all nice and cuddly hair. You see her with the dog? She is tough. Yeah, you should see her. She was training, she's a nuh-uh.
Way better than with people. Way better.
She's amazing. Well, anyway, I want to thank Dr. Taylor and the staff for, for putting together the superintendent's budget. I can't imagine the struggles that you went through in deciding, you know, what, what made the, the cut, what didn't, for, for your proposal. But now it's the, it's in the school board's hands. Ironically, whatever we approve here doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna be the final budget, because we won't know until we get the funding from the locality, we get the funding from the state. I mean, sometimes it's even June. Hopefully, it'll be well before that and, and before May, if we're, we're fortunate. But we are tasked with putting together a budget for the school board, and I, I highly respect, you know, your expertise and your knowledge, and I think that you have a very good handle for the, the Stafford community, and a lot of that is because of the efforts you've made to, to reach out. And you, you, you came in here in a, in a not-good place where we are budget-wise, you know, and, and as you pointed out, it's, it's been a long, long time. But I would ask this board to think about this, you know, the, the licensed scale staff moving pretty close to Phase Three. I mean, it's a 2.7 million adjustment, while at the same time, our non-licensed staff isn't even on Phase One. And I, I mean, I said it in the, you know, in the, in the, in the work session, the teachers are the heart of our schools. Couldn't do it without our teachers, but we also couldn't do it without the rest of the support staff. And I think, you know, there's, there's gonna have to be some hard decisions reached on what we want to put in this budget. Now, the good news is that Dr. Taylor has a, a pretty good feeling that we're gonna get more money from the state, and hopefully, we'll be able to do both of it. But right now, I think we have to deal with what, what we're expecting, what we're asking for, and, and I, I would just ask this board to think about that. I mean, what it, and, and we're not here to make friends, and, and certainly, kind of the opposite happens a lot, but in order to put the licensed, the, the unlicensed staff on non-licensed, whatever the technical term is, the support staff, I'll call it, on Phase One, it's gonna have to come from somewhere, and realistically, the only thing it can come from is the license. Now, the license still has 14.7 million, and you said we needed 3.8 for the, the non-licensed we were to put in.
So it's actually down to 12.
12?
And 2.7 is, is needed to make it 14.7 to fully fund it.
Okay, okay.
But we need 3.8 to close the gap for Phase One.
So hypothetically, if it went down to 8.2, it would be about little, little more than half of what we would need to get the license to Phase Three, so they would be halfway between Phase Two and Phase Three, and the support would be on Phase One, which is several phases below where they would have been if we had been able to do what we had planned to do before. Is that?
Close. You would have to pause the, the licensed scale phase adoption and just do a flat percentage, because you could not afford to do a, you're already doing as much of a partial as you could do on the licensed scale, so you would, you would have to take a break from one to do the other.
You couldn't do, you know, like, percentage of it?
You could do a, a flat percentage, but not a percentage.
Okay, but, but hypothetically, if you did a percentage of it, and then you wanted to catch up, you would add that other percentage that you cut back, and then you would move forward?
Sort of.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
Yeah. You, you could do a flat percentage and then have to do a repair later, but, but that's the same scenario that you're looking at with, with either-or. I, I do think fortunately, you know, it's, it's not great, because we can't see it in front of our face, and we don't have the dollars to work with in front of our face, because we don't know what the legislature is exactly gonna do, but I do, I do see light at the end of the tunnel that's not a train, and that there's a high probability that we're gonna be able to, to fully fund both.
So, so that's an even better reason to try to do something, I believe, for the, the support staff, to get them to Phase One, which is not where we would like them to be or where they would have been if we had been able to do what we had planned to. So I just, I know we're, we're not having a, you know, work session right now, and we've got one for next week, but I would ask the board to be thinking about that. And if we were to, to possibly go in that direction, I think we could also commit the first monies coming in over and above what we had expected. If we wanted to, we could commit that to go back to the licensed, you know, scale. So it's just, there's all different ways we can, can look at it, but, but that's something I would ask us to, 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 to think about. I, I, I think everyone, everyone that works for Stafford County School is, is a very important part, you know, of our family, of our organization, and works hard for those students, so I, I don't even like the idea of having to say, you know, take from one to give to another, but hypothetically, it's not given yet. We're the ones that have to make that decision, so I, I would just ask the board to think about it.
Anyone else? Ms. Randall?
Thank you. I also would like to thank the supervisors for going forth with the, the modulators that we have for both our rise, our North Star and our elementary schools. I'd like to thank the community that has come out to our town halls and that came out this evening, whether you spoke or you're serving as support for someone else, your support staff serving support here too, so I appreciate that. And I would also like to say, I thank Ms. Denham for her comments about making bridges and amends with our supervisors. I know for me, I have the newest one, and, you know, he'll post a picture of the two of us and say, "My new best friend." And so we are definitely working together in conversations and trying to, you know, understand. He is definitely seeking to understand, and he's only been on the job for a month, and he's got a lot on him, and I appreciate his time. I've also met with three other board members and had conversations with them as well in trying to understand as well as be heard, if I, if they'll allow. And so it is definitely a work, and it's something that all of us are doing, you know, in, in different ways with the ones that we have relationships with. As we go forward, we will definitely be saying exactly what we need, and we don't, you know, as we have sat at the table for the last, or I've sat at the table for the last four years, there is not a back down on this board at all. It's, we come, we give it, and then we wait till we receive, and then we make do with what we receive. And we have to do it a couple of times sometimes, depending, like this year with the state budget not being done, and we still had to get contracts out, and, I mean, it just, we follow, you know, we, we don't have that authority. We have to put everything together, put our best presentation forward with the biggest smiles, and then, you know, know that we are also a competing entity with the other great needs in this county, and there's a lot. I definitely appreciate the ESOL lesson that we got this evening, to learn about, you know, how things are in your world and in your room. And the letters that you write, keep writing, because it makes a difference to us, and we need to know what it's like to be you, because even when we come in the schools, we don't always get to see. Sometimes people think, "Oh, I gotta show my shiny parts, they're here," and it's like, mm, you don't have to. You can show us what's real, and we're fine with that, too. So I've, we appreciate invitations into the school to come and see what it is that you think we might be missing. So thank you for coming out this evening. Thank you for the suggestions of how to reach more, how to bring more, you know, every week, every month, come and talk to us. Every week, every month, go and talk to them. We're not trying to tell you to bombard them, because, you know, they're, they're listening too, but, you know, make both sides a part of your conversation. So thank you very much to Dr. Taylor and his staff, because I know that even over Christmas break, they were coming in and getting new Calc tool information and, and trying to figure, you know, Mr. Fulmer and Dr. Taylor were like, "We got something new," and trying to figure it all out, so that our board had the latest and greatest, most up-to-date and accurate numbers. And it's a lot of work on their part, and late, late nights, and we definitely appreciate the, the transparency, the step-by-steps, and all the explanations, and I know it takes a, a lot of time to make that concert work, so definitely appreciate that. So thank you.
Okay, anyone else? And I do have a question. Dr. Taylor, I know you keep telling us to stop digging. I'm trying to figure out exactly how deep our service, our support staff hole is. I know that 3.8 million is the ask for Phase One. We are supposed to be entering Phase Three, so what, how far actually are we behind if we added in Phase Two and, like, if we did Phase One, Two, and this would be Phase Three?
We're substantially behind. Our service staff have taken a backseat for several years, as Dr. Warner noted. We would, would be, should be caught up with our licensed scale, and if that were the case, we would be on Phase Three. That is tens of millions of dollars to catch up to, to that space. The supervisors have asked us repeatedly to come up with plans that we could phase in our approach and that we could build steps over time. We feel like we've presented that, but it does require them to finance those requests as well. So this is as measured as we can get. It's a very reasonable request. It was a request that, that the board made last year and was not fully funded by the supervisors last year, and so now here it is again. I, I think that unfortunately, that this, this is ultimately gonna come down to state revenue as making the, the more substantial difference and not our local revenue. That being said, the local revenue is gonna be critical here, because it is going to be the difference in compensation, so it does matter greatly still, whether that's license compensation or whether that's service compensation. This budget is a long way, away from, from being finalized, to, to Ms. Healy's point. Unfortunately, this has to go through several steps. The legislature has to finalize its recommendation in response to the governor's budget. The governor's budget proposed a 0% increase for our school staff, zero, and we did not think that that was satisfactory, and so we hope that the legislature will come behind. We think that they will. We have every indication that they will make a substantial investment, but then that still will land on the governor's desk, will need to be signed. That will be 60% of our budget outlook, or 61% of our budget outlook. The other 38% of our budget outlook comes from our locality, and that process begins as soon as our process ends. And as we submit a budget to the supervisors for their review, the county administrator will make a proposal and include what he believes should be the revenue increase or not for the schools. We have that projected at an additional $15 million, which is what is the estimate that he gave us, so we are, we are basing our budget based on a lot of estimates. At the end of all of this process, when the supervisors are done with their process and the state is done with their process, and hopefully, the governor signs a, a budget into law that is not in, six months later, that it actually happens before July 1, then this board will have to come back and reconcile yet again and finalize in April what its final version of its budget will look like before we issue contracts and before we make salary commitments to anybody. So I would think of this as very preliminary at this point, and, and know that there are several more steps to go, and that there is an optimistic outlook in some regard, but that we should measure our enthusiasm a little bit as we navigate the next 60 days beyond this, because it is a long road before we can, we can call this complete.
Thank you. I wanted to address one other topic, because it has come up several times, and that's the topics of racism. There have been several mentions, innuendos, lighthearted accusations, some not lighthearted accusations. This board, myself, as a member of this community, as a parent of children in these schools, we take that very seriously. If you have any concerns at all about racism on this board or in this organization, I implore you to either report it to your school, to one of us, to Dr. Stempel, to Dr. Taylor, or to stop having rumored conversations about it. This is not the type of conversation we want to hear about the people our children spend time with and the people who are making decisions on their behalf. So please, tell us. Thank you. Does anyone else have anything to add? And with that, I think we will adjourn. And we will, I guess we'll be back on February 13th. I should read that. Same time, same place.